Clerk, please call the roll.
Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Here.
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 Here. Erin Stone is joining remotely, as is Lisa Schneider-Fabes.
Did we get through the roll? I'm sorry.
Yes, we did.
Sorry, it's a little hard to hear. It's okay. So I seek a motion to approve the October 19th, 2020 Committee of the Whole and Executive Session Minutes.
I move to approve the October 19th, 2020 Committee of the Whole and Executive Session Minutes.
May I have a second?
Second.
The motion having been made and seconded, board members, are there any comments, errors, or omissions to the minutes?
I did.
Go ahead.
On the topic of, it was new business, there is a, I had brought up a topic in the last meeting about having a plan for kindergarten enrichment. And I know we tabled the financial part of it, but I didn't, I didn't remember that we had tabled everything until January. And so the statement is not quite what I expected. It's okay for the minutes, but I'm going to bring it up again, and I guess it would be now old business. But it's just, it's not quite stated the way I would have stated it.
Frank, do you want to state it how you would state it for the record, and then we can just correct?
I read it four times, and it's, it's accurate, it's written, it just didn't get across the impression that I would have gotten if I had written it. So I think it's okay, but I just want to leave open the fact that I'll be bringing it up again.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other, Rosie, are there any other corrections or omissions to the minutes? Okay, so I just want to be clear, Frank, so we're not amending the minutes. So we're gonna, the motion stands that we are seeking to approve the minutes as written. So. So sorry. Okay, can, can, we don't need, do we need a roll call for this?
Yeah. For everything today, because we have some remote.
Okay, so will the clerk please call the roll, not the roll, can you?
Yes. Yeah. Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. I will begin with the Facilities Development Committee. I turn the meeting over to FDC Chair Ellen Sternweiler, and I'm just gonna leave the room for 10 seconds and room my dog. You okay, Ellen?
We're just getting there with an audio problem. I'm disconnected from audio. Am I also?
Where's the Zoom session?
Thank you, everyone, for your patience, as we have faced these technological challenges, as well as the hybrid model in which we operate these days.
Thanks, Carrie, Dr. Ramon's goal.
Right, is that better? Can you hear me now? Well, it does for that. We begin the facility development with construction updates and overview, excuse me, and overview to support the Keep 39 and other identified building needs. Several of the administrators have been working with STR on the design phase of the Ramona and Mackenzie Keep 39 projects. STR is going to present an update on both designs today. Nicholas and Associates will provide an update on estimated project costs. The STR update will include exterior renderings of the main entrance at Ramona and the three new west-facing classrooms at Mackenzie. So I guess I'm gonna turn it over.
Okay, so, so I think that's turned over to me, is that correct?
Thank you, Colby, yes.
Okay, all right, so I'm gonna share my screen if I can, and give you an update. While I'm doing that, let's see, share, okay. Is, can you see this little mark that I just put on the screen? Make sure I got this right. Right screen, because. Did everyone see that?
Yeah, we can see it.
Sounds good. All right, so. So we're proceeding with, with the design. I think we've issued design development drawings, which is the second step, which generally speaking defines the character of the, of the additions that we're, or the work that we're going to be doing. And we're proceeding into construction documents. Joe will have a budget update of what that is based on, on these drawings, but I am just going to kind of highlight where we stand in the design. So Mackenzie first. Oh, I should back up. We're, we're planning on issuing documents in early January and bidding, bidding. And I believe, if I'm correct, that, that, that in February, the, the drawings would be, the bids would be received and be ready for approval. So there are three areas that we're working on at, at Mackenzie. One is the expansion of the cafeteria. That's an interior, just an interior renovation. Two is the main portion, which is, which is an addition, three classroom addition, which is here, that has attached to it some interior renovation that is, in order to get access to it. So this is the current 100 suite of offices. And then the third por- portion is the kindergarten upgrade, which is, which is here. It is converting this typical classroom into a kindergarten with an alternate to provide a little entry addition, entry addition right there that would include a toilet room and some cubbies for, for this, for this new suite. So this is the main, the main portion that we're, that we're doing, the three classrooms. So, so one, two, three classrooms. This is the connection between, from the existing school coming, and the existing school kind of ends right along here. So this is the gym, and then that's that suite 100 here. Oops. So, so there, there. All right, so, so we'll be blocking up some windows in the gym, creating a corridor that kind of goes back like this to access the classrooms. There'll be a series of offices along one side of it, some renovated offices here. We're including two toilet rooms in this corner. And, and that's the gist of the, of the plan. You'll see later on, on the elevations, what we're doing is we're providing some abilities to have teaching walls on three sides of each room. So the exterior room, and these would be windows on either side like that. There's a, plenty of storage and a storage, storage wall with a sink in each classroom. All right? So what we're anticipating that looking like is this. So, so the idea is, so this is, you know, one classroom is to here, second cla-, second classroom is to here, third classroom is to here. This is the corridor going back to the existing, and the offices along that one wall are here. So this is looking from the west. What we're, what we're trying to do here is, because this is next to this playground, we thought that it's an opportunity to, to kind of enhance some of the greenness of the, of the building by doing some protective screens that would double as, as green screens and grow, grow some vegetation on it, and they would also protect the windows from any balls and things that are, that maybe happen in this area. So, so that's, that's this elevation.
I had a question while you're still on this slide. Since they are classrooms and they're right next to an active playground, is there any additional sound dampening in the windows or anything like that that's necessary? Or does the quality windows are good enough?
You know, I, I would think that standard double-pane windows are, are fine. Obviously, if you open the windows, then all the sound is going to come in.
Yeah.
So it's mostly gasketing. I don't, I don't think that the, that the windows are, you know, it's kind of a very typical situation that lots of classrooms back up onto play areas. Normally, we wouldn't, you know, for the sound of playing, go to triple-pane glazing or, or that kind of added expense. But we can certainly look at it if, or, or address it as a, possibly an alternate or something, if you would.
Yeah.
Like to see that.
Best practices, but I mean, it is a. Okay.
Yep, exactly. So they are, that's why we're trying to also provide a little bit of visual screening and the physical screen for the, for the balls and things, so.
May I ask a question?
Yep.
So I love the idea of adding green elements. Do you worry about a loss of light in those classrooms?
You, you know, I, I don't think so. We've got a fairly large, large windows, windows there. And the, the screens do stand out a, a bit away from the, from the window so you can get back in and service, you know, they're, they're, you know, a few feet away so you can kind of get back in there and clean the windows and service things. So I think there'll be plenty of light in the rooms. In fact, it's, you know, it's a, there's, the percentage of glass is kind of the standard amount that we would, we would put in. And I think the, the vegetation will, will filter a little bit when the, with the west, west sun. That's directly, that would be directly this way. But when the sun is coming this way, you know, coming around, I think there'll be lots of light coming in, so.
Can I follow up on the windows question about the gym? If we're losing a lot of, like a wall of windows in the gym, are there windows left on the other side?
For the gym?
Yeah.
No, there are, there, so, so right now, we're not planning any, this, that's the only exterior face. We can't have windows in that wall because it's a, strictly speaking, a firewall. So it has to be, has to be blanked off. If we want windows, we would have to introduce skylights into the gymnasium, which is possible.
I mean, I'm just thinking about a windowless gym, both for air circulation when it gets warm and just kind of depressing, or no?
Most gyms don't have windows.
Is that right?
Yeah, the, the usual reason is because of the glare in the, in the, on the, on the play surface. Very few do, but I think it's nice to have windows myself. Yeah, I always am an advocate for daylight, so would prefer to have that. To put the addition here, we have no choice but to block off the existing ones. So if it's, if it's something that's desired to have windows, we can always introduce skylights into the space to get a little, you know, to get some natural light into the, into the space. I don't think that will help so much with the ventilation, but. So.
Okay, and I must say, skylights add a lot of cost.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we can do, there's, you know, prefabricated skylights that are made out of plexiglass that aren't that, that expensive. I, you know, last time I checked, they were, yeah, I'm not even gonna guess, but yeah, they'll add some cost, yeah. And they also add some potential for leaking, to, to be perfectly honest. But I think we can usually, you know, I think the, the nicest thing about these, these pre-made inexpensive plastic ones is actually they're, they're very well engineered. They, they prevent one of the biggest causes of leaking, which is condensation on the glass by being double-layered of plexiglass and allow, allow the, you know, there's no cold surface for the air, moisture in the air to condense on. Again, if it's a cost issue, that can be, that can be done as an alternate. If you'd like to see that, and you can either accept it or reject it at the time the budgets, prices come in.
Yeah, that's a nice idea.
That could also be added at some later date, right?
Yep, exactly, anytime those could be added, sure.
Mark?
I just wanted to ask Dana real quick, since she's the building principal. Do you, do you see any trade-offs in this design? What, what are your biggest concerns?
Dana, you might, hold on just a second, let's get a microphone.
Thanks, Carrie.
Yeah, thanks for asking. We've gone back and forth a lot to take it from this point with the windows. We have talked a little bit about that. We also have a small gym, for those of you that know Mackenzie, that does not have windows, and we still use in a really great way. I think we were used to the windows in the large gym. So that is a question that even my teacher committee brought up as well. However, the benefit of having the addition put behind the small gym also still gives us plenty of play space in the back, and we didn't have to take up a lot of our blacktop space. And also in our design options, we were able to avoid any second-story addition, which was going to add a couple layers of just concerns to the second floor to not being able to use part of the second floor for part of the year. So we did kind of go back and forth and landed with this option being the best out of the options presented for several reasons. So not having windows in the gym, we usually would not open them on warm days for that circulation because it was just letting hot air in, and there just wasn't a great airflow where some classrooms have a better airflow to open windows. So they weren't often opened for that reason. Do you want?
Anything that you're concerned about, other than the windows and any other things that you've.
No, the areas that we were concerned about in all of the different design options, we were able to land on this one, which really took care of any of the concerns that we had. I think we're really, in the end, with these options, we're getting the larger cafeteria, which is really important. And we're able to net two flex classrooms, which would allow us for those bubble years when we have five in one section. So in the end, we will have two additional flex classrooms, assuming that we have four sections in each grade level. We are right now at five in one grade level. So if this were next year, we would only have one flex classroom. But ultimately, that would allow us some flexibility. This also allows us to rearrange some of the classroom spaces within the building to allow grade levels then to be potted together for that collaboration between the teachers and the students. So this is really offering us more options, both with space and the use of our space.
Any more questions? Okay, so I will move on the la-. So, so another portion is the, is the kindergarten area. So, so we are turning room 109, which is this room, which is a typical classroom, into a kindergarten classroom. So in order to do that, we're proposing a small addition that has a toilet room and, and traditional cubbies for the, for the kids to be as an entry. So you would come in, put your stuff down, and then go into the class this way. So, and then there's, then there's a toilet room for the kids immediately off of the space, so. So that's just a small addition, I believe, right now, this is an alternate. So we don't need to accept that right now. All right? And then the last bit is the cafeteria. So the cafeteria, we're going to, and I'm gonna zoom out a little bit. So this was the existing classroom. There was a partition here. We're gonna be removing this partition and creating one, one large space. So. So that's, that's that scope. And then, as, while we're, while we're there, we're also looking at an alternate. There was a door to get into this room, this classroom here, that, that made classroom 101 smaller. It was about like that. So we're looking at actually moving this wall back in order to get some more, turn this back into more of a typical classroom size, room 101. So that's a, that again is, is an alternate. So any questions on those two, two parts of the project before I move to Ramona? Okay, so Ramona has two basic areas. There's an addition to the north, which are classrooms. So there's the kindergarten classroom that is an extension of the typical classrooms that are here. So that's, and then, and then there is another additional EC classroom, which is a repet- repetition of these classrooms. So. So that's the one to the north. There, there is a little bit of, there was an existing tool, tool shed that was kind of like right here. And we're actually relocating that to the, relocating that as part of the work. And the last part is providing some offices and conferences, conference space at the, at the existing entry area of the school. So, so that's this bit. All right, so. So, starting, starting at the entry. This is, this is now the entry to the school. The existing school was like this. Kind of like that. We're adding a conference room for doing IEPs, et cetera, and three small group rooms here. So again, because we're having to treat this pink line as a firewall, we're trying to limit the amount of penetrations going through here. So, so this will just kind of, these entries will be put through the existing. I don't know how familiar you are with Ramona, but there's a series of closets there, which we hope to maintain the, the majority of that. But we're gonna kind of take out panels of that to create new entries there. So, so one of the features that you can see is a little corner that's kind of, this room is kind of pushed back a little bit. And that's to help kind of let the space, you know, kind of come into the main entry and keep it a little more open than it might have been if the corner came out. I know Cindy was very concerned about the quality of that entry space, and I think we've, you'll see later, I think it's, it's still going to be a very nice space. And then these are, this is the development of the classroom addition, which includes actually some office space for teachers down here. And then, and then this is the EC classroom, and this is the last kindergarten. Again, modeled on the existing one, where coatrooms will be backed up, the toilet rooms will be backed up, and little kitchen area sinks will be backed up. So, so that's that, just kind of extending. We're gonna extend that same, that same appearance that was done in the 2014 addition, just kind of keep on extending that like this, wrap it around. And so. And this is the, the look of the addition at the front entry. So from there on is the, is the addition, you know, kind of from here, that way. So this, this is the existing three doors that were in the entry. This area back here was always blank. It's the limestone panel that was there. So, so we're not really taking any kind of the glass or anything from the, from the existing entry. Again, we thought we might introduce a little bit of vegetation with a similar kind of green screen that we were doing at Mackenzie to kind of help, you know, keep this space inviting. So any questions? Comments?
I have a question, and then I'd wanna hear from Cindy, and then I'll ask from everyone else. But the, the space that is there currently, you know, there's a tree and some special things right in front that past students and present, past students and faculty and present have planted and put around there. It was pretty special to the school. Where's that gonna be transplanted? I know it sounds like a silly question, but it's, it was a pretty important thing to everybody. And I think it's gonna be a really big deal to everyone. Is there a place for that?
Is, is Cindy here?
Hi, Colby.
Hi, sorry.
So, yeah, Colby's been talking about that with me, because that was something I brought up also. And we're looking into transplanting that tree either to the other side of the building, that green area right next to the office, or in the garden. So we're looking into transplanting that tree in those bushes, and the rocks that the kids painted will still be used probably in the garden, but we haven't decided the final spot.
Then I was gonna ask Cindy how she feels about the new entrance, and where your office is right there too, so.
Yeah, as Colby said, I was nervous about the new entrance and it feeling too much like a tunnel going in. We're desperate for small group space and conference room space, so this is a priority for the building. But I also didn't want the entrance to not be inviting to everyone. It's a big part of our school. So I think the, the way that they've designed it, that picture feels really inviting to me. And I think it's gonna be worth it for families. I also like the conference room being right up front for families. It's really a, a nice place to come and meet with our team and the purpose of it. So I think it solves all of our problems, and it looks really nice in the design.
Just one more question. Colby, because of the tunnel aspect that Cindy mentioned and knowing that building really well, and the fact that that, that walkway now is really, really long down that whole extension. Is there any possibility, I mean, I realize that we were, you just talked about it, skylights present possible water leakage problems, but there's gonna be no light for a really long stretch of that hallway? Like, it's, and it is pretty long, like from the entrance all the way down.
Yeah, from here, you're saying that way, like all the way.
Really are, and even though the, the front, from the front, it looks beautiful, those are actually, you know, gonna have closed doors to conferences, I doubt, unless there's glass on both sides.
Yeah, so, so it's actually not changing in any, any of that, except adding this length. So that, this, it does get longer here, but this was a limestone wall, or currently is a limestone wall. So there was no. or currently is a limestone wall. So there was no light, you know, here before anyway.
Okay.
Okay, so so it's really just this portion that's been kind of added. So it's one more classroom worth of worth of corridor. We still do have a glass, you know, glass door at the end. So a little bit further down, you'll still see a little bit of daylight. So
Be interested in hearing or seeing or thinking what Cindy thinks about the possibility of adding some light skylight light there in that hallway? It's a really long kind of dark hallway, and that even just that extra classroom, the extra classrooms at the end, that that extends the extension of that light away by that much is a lot.
Right.
I this didn't occur to me or my team. It hasn't come up. That hallway feels very bright and open to me when I walk down. So I I've never had that thought. I don't know. It's it's not on my concern list, but it's I defer to the architects on that kind of stuff.
I don't think it's uncommon. It's about the same length as, you know, that's that's one corridor. That's that's the other corridor. So when you're standing here, this is the same situation as the main corridor to get to the back. And that that just has a has a window here and a window there. You know, if that's kind of a subjective thing, but we do in corridors like this, we do like to put at the end, you know, a glass, you know, a glass set of doors, and that usually makes people feel like they can see daylight, you know, through it. So so you're not out of sight. This is the corridor that's actually kind of the problem one, because its door is, you know, down a right angle, right in the back. So going to the library, that's a less inviting one, I would think, than than this one will be currently, you know, because you can always see daylight as you're walking down the corridor. So I would I would think that it's fine as it is. Again, skylights can always be added at some other time, you know.
The corridor that leads to where the new classrooms would be. So my understanding is those are early childhood classrooms on the west, correct?
These, yes.
Are they kindergarten classrooms right now on the east?
Correct, yes, they they are. So these two are are kindergarten. And then this one actually has a little has a little needs to be modified a little bit. We're going to make this one back a kindergarten, and this one has a little a little has a is going to remain kind of like a smaller room with a EC room with a little meeting area cut out of it. But but yeah, so this one, we're returning back to a kindergarten. And that one, we're making the new kindergarten, and that way we get our our four four kindergartens. But this was originally designed as a as a kindergarten room. It's just not being used that way right now. So
Okay.
So yeah, four in a row, right like that.
Any other questions?
A somewhat related question. And since we have the architect on board, I was looking at our financial statements. And there's a rundown at the end on page 114 about the capacity for students. So square footage by school and then capacity and then current population. How was that calculated?
I'm not familiar with what's being referred to.
I'm going to ask Cory if he knows. I think it's a rough square footage calculation, which doesn't always reflect exactly how many students we can actually accommodate based on our programmatic offerings. But I'll ask Cory if he has additional insight he'd like to share.
Well, usually, like in the districts, the new cappers, the square footage would be should be, you know, pretty accurate, and then would be updated in projects. But certainly, the capacity is going to be a little bit more subjective of what, you know, what capacity for a building is. I don't have specifics right now on what we use to model that, but I would imagine it would be I can't imagine it would be different than what our grade size targets are. So the subjective part is obviously not every district has the same targets for class size. That's where I would.
So it's general principles.
Yeah, that's what I that would be my expectation.
I mean, I'd like to know later, you know, because it sort of begs questions. You know, it looks like
When again the page, John?
Oh, it's 114 on the the regular financial statements for the district. And specifically, so we're talking about Ramona. You know, in 2020, it says our capacity for students is 620, but our population is 523, which implies that we are larger than we need to be for the population that we have. But we're talking about expanding the school. So so it's the kind of question that I think needs to be addressed.
Yeah, again, as I mentioned, the programmatic kind of offerings of our district include the Learning Commons and the two flexible spaces that are available there for some of the instructional offerings that we provide. I think, though I wasn't here when the Learning Commons were being designed, they were designed with an eye toward the Makerspace and some of the technology kinds of breakouts that we want to be able to offer for our students. Those classrooms could be, on a short term basis, transitioned into a typical general education kind of classroom environment. However, if we do so, then we lose some of the space available for Makerspace and Technology. The other thing to keep in mind is this is a really rough calculation, as I understand it, and our preschool and kindergarten programs have a much lower capacity. So a lot of our preschool classrooms, if I'm not mistaken, have somewhere between six and 12 students and many adults supporting that. And so a classroom that otherwise could accommodate 22 to 25 students really is only serving six to 12 students. And so that ends up with a different calculation than a baseline calculation because of the way in which we offer our pre-K and preschool program. I know that Cindy had her microphone up. She was going to add to my comments.
I was just going to say special ed as well. So at Ramona, a lot of our rooms are used for special education needs and early childhood needs. And so instead of having a class of 27, it might have a group of six kids in it would change your numbers drastically. Any more questions? Thank you, Colby.
Welcome.
Next.
Joe was going to update us on the cost aspect of those projects.
Sure. Like previous projects, we like to build in multiple rounds of budget checking balances. We are right now in the second round for both McKenzie and Ramona. We're still at a high level phase. As we start getting into the construction documents, the next couple of months, our budgets will become more detailed. But right now, generally speaking, we're tracking where we want to be. There are a couple of unforeseen that we did discover last month with regards to soils. So I have included a placeholder to handle the unsuitable soils and and restore those. So I have a $75,000 placeholder for each project. But again, for the most part, we're tracking where we want to be. My goal is to hopefully, as the budget gets refined and the design gets refined, the the impact that that we're anticipating to handle and treat these unsuitable soils will come out. So we're going to stick to the process that we've done in previous years. We're going to be we'll be budgeting, like I said, two more times before we go out to bid, just as a final check before before we issue those bid documents.
John.
I would benefit from a reminder of the big picture numbers we're talking about.
So right now, projected base bid, based on our latest budget is 7.670, so 7,670,000 for projected base bid. And again, this is there's some conserviveness built into that, and I anticipate that coming out as the design progresses. But right now, that's that's currently where it's projected.
How does it divide up between the schools?
McKenzie base 4.6 and Ramona base just over 3 million.
Lisa?
Joe, can you explain a little bit about the soil issue?
Sure. So anytime we we do additions, we do geotechnical work. So we'll send a third party firm out there to drill some borings, sample sample the soil. This is this is something the design team needs, especially the structural engineer, to know what type of soils to design the foundations for. So throughout this process, we've now discovered that in the areas of our expansion, we have some soil that might not be as strong as we want it to be. It might be more sandy than than good hard clay, for example. So these are things that we want to vet out early to make sure that the structural aspect of the addition is designed properly and not have to deal with this during the construction phase, because that's just going to cost more money and delay the schedule. So this is typical. This is a typical check and balance from a design standpoint that we do upfront to ensure that we know what's out there. So now that we know this, we'll make the provisions and make it as cost effective as possible. So as the design's going on, we're going to exchange some thoughts on what is the most cost effective approach and best approach to to address this? So we can change the foundations a little bit. We can stick to a typical standard foundation and then remediate the soil itself. That sometimes is more cost effective than than changing the structural design of it. So these are the these are the pros and cons we're going to be weighing.
Thank you.
Do you find the soil, that problem at both locations or?
Yes, yes, there's an anticipated undercut, so removal of unsuitable and typically bring back in stone or aggregate. So at both sites, it's anticipated that we will be performing an undercut. Now, I will say we will certainly carry and will carry an allowance to handle such an undercut. That doesn't mean to say we're automatically just going to do it. Again, these are borings and isolated pinpoint areas. We don't necessarily know for sure that it's representative of the entire footprint, for example. So as we're digging for foundations and and whatnot, we will have a tech there testing as we go. And if 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 we don't need an undercut in certain locations, we're not going to do it and spend the money. So this is just preliminary information that that we like to vet out.
I think John is asking a question.
Yeah, he just said. John, you might be on mute. We can't hear you. Now you're good.
Okay. Hey, is it both schools that have the issue?
Yes.
Okay, interesting. How expensive could that issue get to deal with?
In both these cases, it's no more than 75,000. So right now, that's our that's our safe placeholder. So it's it's an impact. Is it it's is it hundreds of thousands of dollars? No, it's it's under 75,000 at this point.
There is some good news in the soils report is that the soil doesn't contain anything in it that can't be disposed of norm through normal process. So that's the that's the good news. So sometimes they have chemicals in it that it has to go to a special site and and have special handling procedures. The soil is fine. So so that's the good news in it.
Yeah, and and again, it's a relatively small percentage. Our initial preliminary budget placeholders are leaning on the side of conserviveness for a reason. So again, my my goal is that this this impact works itself out of the overall budget and we land where we need to be.
Now I think we're moving on. So the next piece of our agenda is the second story, air conditioning at WJHS. The fiscal year 2021 budget for the Capital Projects Fund includes money for the addition of air conditioning to the second floor classrooms at the junior high. This project was included in the list of capital projects to be completed in the summer of 2021. Information is going to be shared with us regarding the estimated cost and timeline for this project. And I believe Cory.
I'll just remind everyone, remember that this project was queued up for this summer that just passed. However, we moved it to accommodate the stormwater project and the work that needed to be done in conjunction with that at High Crest, closing down High Crest School for the summer. And so this project has already been pushed back a year in order to accommodate some of that work. So I'll let Cory talk through some of the logistics at this point.
All right, so obviously, we've, you know, the focus of our facilities for the last few months has been the two key projects. But also embedded in the in the in the capital projects budget for 21 and subsequently 22 is a couple of other things that I want to point out for a couple of a couple of reasons. Just, you know, mainly from timing and lead time and and, you know, wanting to, you know, proceed with those. At least at the planning stages. So the the document that I've shared and some of you have the physical copy. You know, in the past, from what from what I was, you know, handed off to was kind of a larger multi-year capital projects timeline and funding situation. The funding situation component of it, it's really not been updated since it would have been shared with the board the last time. We'll do that next month as we dive into the multi-year projections in much more detail. But what I did want to do is is just kind of on one page summarize, you know, what had previously been planned for for not only summer 21, but the the following four summers as far as projects and estimated and estimated costs. So on this particular page, the costs represent what's in Capital Projects Fund, which is really the construction, the currently the architectural and construction management fees that go along with these projects is paid out of operations and maintenance. So the the numbers that Joe just recently mentioned are a little bit different for Ramona and McKenzie. As it relates to the the second floor at the junior high, there's two components. The first would be adding air conditioning to the second floor classrooms. And also, piggybacking on that project would be some health, play, safety work to take care of some some electrical work. And just for the reminder, last year, last fiscal year, the district applied for a $50,000 state maintenance grant project with with ISB or the state. And that was approved. And but there was two components to it. One, some of it was at Ramona and some was at the junior high. The Ramona compartment was finished this past summer. And then the junior high component still needs to be completed for us to receive the 50,000. So that component of it had been estimated at about 132,000. So the remote the two key projects, as far as like, you know, which budget years would they hit? Those two projects would be roughly two thirds in fiscal year 21, and then the last third in fiscal year 22. Whereas the second floor at at the junior high, that project would be something that as as I had looked through the notes would start in June. And so you're really only looking at about 15% of it hitting fiscal year 21, and then whatever's left would go to fiscal year 22. And also embedded within the current year budget is about 281,000 for a partial roof replacement at Harper. I'm not really interested in talking about that one yet. After talking with STR, we're going to have them take a another look at the all the different roof components at Harper to see, you know, exactly when that might need to be addressed. Does it need to be this upcoming summer? Does that part of the roof need kind of wait for another year? You know, when you look at any time you look at a multi-year plan for projects like this, you know, the assumption is always that, you know, there's a need for either a place you know, the assumption's always that, you know, there's a need for either replacement or it addresses a need that like the air conditioning, it addresses something that's not there previously. So, um, that one's kind of on hold and has a, is a much shorter lead time. Um, so really where we're at is that we're kind of at a point where we would like to proceed, have STR proceed with kind of the architectural drawings and, and documents to prepare ourselves to go out for bid. And kind of where we would be at is in a very similar spot to the Ramona and McKenzie additions where yeah, STR and administration and Nicholas were working behind the scenes on these projects, but the board isn't committed to anything until you would receive those, those bid pack, those bid responses, and then the, you know, the board would take their formal act. So that's really where we're at. Project that, you know, when we, when I look at the, the bigger list of things, three of those things tend to, you know, address current needs and they also, you know, help in our current environment as well. You know, I mean, a- as we talked about, you know, students wearing masks, um, when it's really warm outside. At least being new here, the one place, one of the places in the district that I've heard from a lot of people that gets pretty warm is that second floor at the junior high. And then, you know, with the key projects, you know, th- those buildings would receive additional space for X amount of programming. So that's really where we're, kind of where we're at. Um, if, if the board has any questions or thoughts, we, we appreciate that.
Frank, I think was the first hand up.
The, the numbers that we got just a couple of minutes ago for McKenzie and Ramona were twenty to twenty-five percent higher than the numbers here.
Yep.
And I, I know, I know there's the two categories, but I didn't remember the, some, the design part that we covered in a different box being big as twenty, twenty-five percent. I mean, I thought it was more in the, you know, five to 10% range. So what's, how do, how is that reconciled?
So the, probably the biggest difference is at least because we're in such a early stages, there's a lot of contingencies built into, for example, like in the estimating that Nicholas does, like we have amounts for designing and construction continued in addition to the architectural and construction management.
Frank, is your question, what makes up the difference between four, six and three, six?
Yeah, that, that's a good way to say it. Yeah.
So there's, um, there's about eight line items that make up that differential. Uh, one is general conditions. Um, so that's, that's fixed and reimbursable general conditions. So onsite supervision, safety, project management. And then we carry a placeholder for reimbursables such as dumpsters. Um, so we'll have various placeholders for reimburse first bowl general conditions. And then, um, those are pass-throughs to the owner based on actual. So if we have a placeholder for fifty dumpsters, for example, and we use twenty, we only build a district for the twenty. Um, so in, in our, in our, in our experience, uh, there's always leftover value out of the reimbursable. So that's sort of an allowance. And then, and then we have a premium for, uh, payment and performance bond. We have insurance, uh, CM fee, which on this I believe is five and a half percent, uh, AE fee, which I believe is eight percent. And then we have onsite called inspections, uh, geotech work and then site surveying. So those, those eight major components make up that differential. So it's not just CM fee and AE fee.
Right. I'm, I'm more just trying to get a, a baseline. Like you said, these numbers are represent seventy to eighty percent of the total cost of the district. Is that true for the, uh, would that be true on the, the orange ones, the AC and other ones would?
So we, so I haven't, I haven't budgeted, um, or prepared an, an all-in look. Um, the budget documents that you typically see provide sort of a here's, here's the all-in, which I like presenting it that way. But when we get to these budget docs here, they're separated, um, for accounting purposes, which is fine. I have not put together a complete budget document for these three projects in orange yet. But to answer your question, general conditions would be less for the AC work. So we have a million two. I would say between the AE and CM fee, they're going to be comparable. So if that's thirteen to fourteen percent, that's a given. But when it comes to general conditions, the schedule on that, this is a summer critical timeframe. So instead of six months like we have at McKenzie and Ramona, we'll have three months. Our reimbursable general condition placeholders are much less in that type of scope versus additions and Reno. So, I would anticipate it being less than, than what we just reviewed for McKenzie.
Thank you.
Um, you had a question?
Uh, yes. So this document, Cory, is this, this is based on when you think the expense is going to fall in which fiscal year?
No. So the, the, the expense would be split over, each of those projects would be split across different fiscal years. So like the summer of twenty one would be, you know, some of it would be in the current fiscal year, some would be next.
So is it, is it safe to say it's, it's basically what needs to be approved for work to start in the twenty twenty one year?
Well.
Estimated of the cost of the project overall.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah. I guess, uh, so where I'm at, where I'm going with this is, is looks, I, I personally think it, it doesn't look great to, you know, approve eight million dollars of expenses going into this fiscal year given, um, the uncertainty that we're dealing with. And then in the following fiscal year, have two million dollars. And then in the next fiscal year, have four and a half million dollars. The next fiscal year have five hundred thousand dollars. And would suggest that a smoothing of the expenses over the next five years would make more sense to me. My perspective. Meaning, um, four million a year would be something reasonable, like take the amounts. We have to prioritize the project. Keep thirty nine is two point three and keep, uh, for Ramona and three point seven. So you, now, if you, if what you're saying is you split them up, you do one, one year, one, the next year, I get that. But I, I don't think you can split up the three point seven for McKenzie, right? I, I don't know, Mark. I'm asking. So what I'm asking for is, you know, I'm looking and trying to be critical, right, of what we're doing. And, and if I were sitting in the audience, I would kind of wonder, you know, hey, is there a better way to do this? So that's why I'm asking the question.
Understood.
I do not have the answer.
So I guess from my perspective, the way I've approached all these projects, you know, in normal circumstances and, and under the, the pandemic, I, I kind of view the process to ultimately getting the board to say yes or no on a project is, is multi-phase one. You know, today we're, we're, you know, we're all getting the finalized fiscal year twenty results, right? That gives us a new piece of information that was different than what we had previously, previously known. And then next month we will, you know, incorporate not only these projects, but all, you know, the, the new fiscal year twenty, you know, the data that we have for fiscal year twenty one into our five-year projections. You know, and that also gives us, at that point, we'll have had, you know, five months of, of, of operating and living with, with, with COVID. And so that'll give us another perspective, an updated perspective of, you know, what does fiscal year twenty one look like? What does the, the following few years with some of these projects baked in? How does that impact our end goal of, you know, forty percent or higher for the operating funds? And then ultimately, as some of these projects, you know, as the projects would get bid out, I, I, that's kind of the last piece of information as we go through the whole design process. Are we able to kind of stay with, in that realm of where we initially started it as a project cost and, and within our budget parameters? And it gives us that final piece of information to, you know, for the board to look at it and say, okay, yeah, we're comfortable or no, like, you know, we want to hold on something. So that's kind of the, the process or the lens I've kind of viewed all these projects with as it relates to, to this year. So, I mean, you know, kind of to go back to really where we're at right now is, you know, obviously we've been working on the two key projects, but then for the junior high one, it's really kind of a, you know, do we proceed with having administration and STR and Nicholas, you know, investigate it? Find out what, you know, as, as, as the, you know, this, this one-page document that we're, that we're all looking at, you know, a lot of these numbers, um, obviously the keep ones are more updated, but you know, things change over time, but they're all estimates from, you know, so you know, we wouldn't really know truly what everything would, would look like until we investigate further. So that's really where we're at is just seeking that feedback one way or the other.
So, um, a follow-up to that. So really, like you said, what we're asking for today is the next step of investigating about what, how much did that cost?
Um, that'd be a good question for Colby since they would be, you know, normally how, how, once we would start on a project, you know, something like this, if you went forward with it, would be bill, it would be part of the ultimate fee that STR, that we pay to STR. But Colby, can you answer what?
So, so, uh, I think the, the complete, uh, through bidding would be, uh, would be, well, so our fee would be eight percent of the one point two, you know, construction cost of which we'd only, you know, charge seventy percent or so to get it through construction documents. So the bidding and, uh, and construction is the remaining, uh, quarter, quarter of that. So, so that's the cost. I think there is some urgency in deciding this because uh, equipment for the air conditioning, uh, does, uh, does take a long time to procure. The design, uh, includes a chiller at this point, which is running at least, you know, under the best of times is sixteen weeks worth of lead time to get, to get these units. Uh, and with COVID, there may be delays. So, uh, so I think, uh, I think, you know, we're, we're, it's, it's getting to the, to the point where where if we want to do this next year, we're, we have to decide, you know, decide now. So I'm try, my math is not so, so great on that, but, uh, I don't know what, what that percentage is.
Colby, to be clear, are you saying if we want to proceed with this, that with this, do you mean the, uh, air conditioning at WJHS?
Yes, the air conditioning. Yes.
Not asking for a decision on Ramona and McKenzie at this point.
No, 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 no. Just the air conditioning. I thought that was the question. I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time, uh, hearing with the, the, some of the, some of the speakers. So.
So a reminder everyone to speak into the microphone.
I'll both speak in and speak loud. Um, so I just, John, I hear what you're saying about, um, spreading it out. Kobe, I also hear what you're saying about the air conditioner. And I just want to say, if we prioritize and we decide we want to delay something, um, I don't think delaying the air conditioning at the junior high is something that should be done for a couple of reasons, right? The climate keeps heating up. It is unbearable on the second floor. I don't know if the air conditioner issue is going to affect any kind of pandemics in the future, but I'm just assuming it's helpful. But I do think how hot it is on the second floor of the junior high is an issue that we should address. I don't know how other board members feel, but Kobe's saying we need to make a decision. This feels like a no-brainer to me.
So I would take the opposite approach. I mean, that, the way I starting to look at this, and if we're going to get into budget decisions in order to make the decision today, then we have to get into it. If we're just talking about doing design work that could be delayed, um, that's a different thing. But there's in my mind, on capital projects, there's the life and safety things which have to get done. There is the operational things that change how we teach. And then there's the makes the environment better. Um, and, you know, keep is something that we've been talking about as being an operational advantage. And, um, air conditioning is important, but, um, secondary to that would be in my mind. Um, and I think one way or the other, we have to address the fact that there are budget issues and not everything that we thought we could do a year ago, we're going to be able to do. So that would be my starting point.
All right.
So, um, I, I guess there's some new news here for me, which is that if we are trying to make a decision on air conditioning today, then I need some additional information. Uh, I'm not clear that that's really what we're trying to do. Usually, in fact, we don't vote on things in committee of the whole meeting. So, so I know we're not going to approve it today. But just in, in light of that, let me suggest, and I think this is in line with what Frank's saying, it's, even if it's incomplete, for me to be able to make what I feel like is an informed decision on any of these projects, I need to have an update of where we are on the overall bu- budget. There's no, you know, different, but I know that we do things in, in, in different categories, but all the money's green. And so, um, you know, if we can get to that sort of all, all-in costs, so including the design costs with the construction costs, it doesn't matter which bucket it's in to me. And how that affects, uh, the budget for each of these projects that we think are chunks. And then also what we think, and again, it'll be estimates, we, we understand that, but what we think the unexpected costs from, uh, Corona have been, that's the information that I would like to be able to see, be able to say, should we go forward with the air conditioning today or tomorrow? All of that said, I'm also going to agree with Lisa. I think that the air conditioning in the second floor is actually a educational effectiveness issue. And so it's, it's very high priority to me.
So can I just jump in as like a matter of, so Mark and Frank completely understand and, and agree, but let, let's just sit there and think about, um, the timing. So Kobe, can I understand really when the decision has to be made on air conditioning? And then can I hear, you know, from the administrative team on when we think we can have real budget numbers to have this discussion?
Okay. So I'm going to, I'm going to put it this way. The, uh, what I'm looking for right now is the ability to go and start designing this. Okay. So that's a, a risk of my design fees, which, you know, are somewhere around seventy five thousand dollars to completely design it. Now, now those aren't really a risk because the design will be designed and could be done the following year. All right. So, so that's usable, you know? But, uh, so, so that's the first bit of information. The second bit of information is that, and this is a little bit of complexity. I, I, I don't really, you know, it's a little hard, hard to do is there's very little time to actually design the entire system because it's fairly complicated. Adding a chiller to the roof, we have to put some steel there and some things like that. So, so the actual installation will take some time. That said, that would push the, push the equipment purchase kind of dangerously close to when it would get installed. So what I have been contemplating is kind of two bids for this. The first bid would be to specify all of the equipment, chiller, the replacement parts that we need for in the actual classrooms. And bid that separately from, from the actual installation. I think we did this for work at Central at one time. It's not new to the district. Actually, we've done it before. Uh, but, uh, but because of that, it kind of makes the, makes the decision-making from your end to, to step. So I would imagine that, that the actual So I would imagine that, that the actual decision to go ahead, I mean, I would like to go ahead, bid in, in December, uh, the equipment, which means you probably in January know that cost. At that point, you could go no-go the rest of the project. If, I guess is what I'm saying, but we would have bids for equipment, which you could either reject or accept. Does that make sense? Then, then we would probably for February have the cost for the installation.
That what you're asking for today is, is the green light to do the design docs?
Correct. The, the design docs, that's really, that's really the, the critical thing, yeah.
Yep.
Well, and to be clear, I think what our plan was to proceed that way unless the board indicates otherwise, because our plan has been laid out that, that is the plan. This certainly is the opportunity for the board to pull back or redirect the plan, but as it stands right now, that is our plan to proceed. We do feel like the second-story air conditioning at WJS is, is critical and, and had otherwise planned to proceed, unless the board directs us otherwise today.
Board members.
Next one.
Yeah, I'd like to jump in. So, um, I wanted to say that I agree with what Mark said as well. Um, I'd like to echo that I would like to see the full budget where we're at, um, and get a sense, a better sense of really what, um, COVID, all the extra expenses where it has landed us, just in general. I think it really, I mean, if, if we're gonna be fiscally responsible, we, we really have to have a better sense of, you know, where we are in terms of our reserves and all that. That said, um, I agree, I think this is critical. I think it is part of our educational, it, it's an educational necessity at this point. I agree with Lisa and, and Mark on that, that this is not like a frivolous add-on, um, and it has gotten hotter and hotter. And, you know, particularly with the new COVID guidelines and all that, I, I, I think it's, it's just become crucial. So, and even, you know, even if it were, I would say beyond what we planned originally budget-wise, I think we might have to reconsider some other things possibly, moving down the road, you know, some dreams we had or whatever, and replace those, but, you know, I, I still think we have to do that with the big picture. We have to see everything in order to be able to do that. So, um, I still think that we need, we have to fit this in. And I still think that keep is crucial. So these two projects are, you know, we're looking at two projects that are crucial for two different reasons, but we don't have all the other pieces of the picture to be able to figure out what else and where else we can, in the future, you know, move things around so that we can accommodate our budget in a responsible way, moving on. You know, this isn't enough for me. Um, I, I'm gonna ask Amy, because you've spoken a lot.
I'm, I'm quick. I have lots of thoughts about the whole, uh, process, but in general, I just want to say that I in full support of what you're asking, which is to pursue the design for the agency.
So are there any board members who are against proceeding with design at this point? I'm just mindful of the time here, I don't want to cut off before it's.
That, I'm okay with the design. I think what I've heard, though, is that the decision on capital projects is, the timeline has moved up by a month. Because the, the date in order to, to order equipment is one month earlier than we would have been normally required to make the decisions, and the piecemeal decisions is not appropriate. So the decision-making process of capital budgets is in February anymore, it's March. I mean, it's eight, it's January. And if we're, the $75,000 makes sense, it's reusable, it's the next step, I have no problem with that. But to, in order to make a capital decision process, we have to have all the facts, and it sounds like there's a timeline now that has moved up. So we now need to have a full capital discussion in January, not February, and whatever that means in terms of December to lead into that. But from what I've heard here is that that timeline has moved up by a month.
So I want to just make sure I'm understanding you, Frank. You are saying that you, you would not want to proceed with the second-story air conditioning without a full decision on Ramona and Mackenzie as well. You want to be able to make all of those decisions in conjunction with each other in January.
I think that's important, yes.
So I think we're all in agreement about moving forward, where the go-ahead for the design, that's the most important thing today, so, yes. Everyone has a thumbs up on that, and I think that is, includes what we needed to conclude today on this project.
From a timing standpoint, Mackenzie and Ramona, so December 10th is where we're gonna hit our 85% construction document, phase. So we'll know, we'll have a really good handle on where those two are gonna land based on those 85% CDs. Um, and also by that time, we can, we'll have enough design information to roll in a, a good update on the, uh, air conditioning work. So I think the timing to pull all three of those together and present those, at the latter part of December, I know we have holidays and all that, but, um, I think that's where I'm thinking in my head, projecting where we're gonna be.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions, or can we, uh, give our construction and, uh, design team a big thank you? And see you next month.
Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Colby.
Hey.
Bye.
Bye-bye, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back over to Lisa.
Thank you, and I'm gonna turn it all over to John, uh, for the school finance committee items.
Thanks, Lisa. Um, hey, before, before we move into that, can I suggest a five-minute break?
I'm sure that you won't be alone, so, yeah.
Whoa, five minutes, this time I mean. 2:27, or 9:27.
I got my coffee.
You got your coffee?
We'll be even closer.
I got my coffee, let's do it. Is, uh, Dr. Krimis Gold there? I can't see.
Got my coffee.
Yes.
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, I think we're, we're back.
We're back. Okay, John, it's your, it's your show, it's the John's Show.
This is the easy show for me.
Thank you.
We have our audit partner, and, I'm sorry, I forgot. From Baker Tilly, and Cory, so I'm gonna turn it over to Cory to talk about the, uh, 2020 audit reports, and, and present that audit report.
Thanks. Sure, as most of the board members, uh, Baker Tilly is, uh, a new audit firm for us, it's the first year for them. And so, they just completed every, completed everything, and today to give us a presentation on what they did and how the audit went, is Nick Cavallari is a partner with Baker Tilly, so, um, you're on the clock.
All right, thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna bear with me real fast, I'm gonna get my presentation started, and hopefully I share the right screen. Okay. Share our screen.
Finances, here we go. We can talk through where we ended and where we're going.
Okay, so I'm hopeful that everybody is able to see, um, the slide deck at this time.
Yep.
We got thumbs up, perfect. Thank you, well, um, it's, it's nice to be here this morning. I prefer a morning board meeting as opposed to an evening one at any time. Um, you know, one of the things I just wanted to point out is that we have completed our audit and issued all of our reports on October 28th of, of 2020. Um, I have a few of the people that were engaged in the, the financial statement audit for the school district listed in our, in our slide here, um, today. I hope to kind of go over a little bit of the audit approach, the results, briefly cap on the financial results, and then open the floor to any questions that, uh, that the board may have. So the, the scope of our audit is, is pretty extensive. There is a comprehensive annual financial report on the CAFR. There's an annual financial report that's required for all school districts in the state to have audited, also known as the AFR. There's a schedule of expenditures of federal awards, commonly referred to as a CFOP. There is a report that's, uh, in the second year of having to be audited. It's called a consolidated year-end financial report that's required by the Grant Accountability and Transparency Unit in the state of Illinois. The district's required to have a single audit performed, which is a federal compliance audit over the use of your federal award dollars. And then also, as part of performing the district's financial statement audit, we're required to, um, render an opinion on internal control over financial reporting and any other matters that we may have identified regarding the compliance with laws and regulations during the course of our audit. So what's important to understand, man responsibilities, uh, management's responsible for the, the presentation of the financial statements. They're also responsible for establishing and maintaining effective internal control over financial reporting and compliance with laws and regulations. Also, another layer of, of compliance to be considered is the use of federal award dollars as defined under the grant award agreements and the compliance supplements that are issued by the federal government. And then also, at the end, is a representation of all of the matters regarding the inputs into the financial statements, disclosures, consideration of subsequent events, you know, many, many different things. Our responsibility is to render an opinion on the financial statements. We will consider your internal control over the preparation of the financial statements. We do that for the purposes of designing our audit approach to ensure that we address risk appropriately during the audit, and then when we render an audit opinion, that it's appropriate, and we haven't, um, you know, done something in error, so to speak. Um, with the federal compliance awards, there's compliance requirements that are identified for certain awards that we have to test as major programs, but then the, the federal government also wants us to look at the control environment over the, your, your, um, over your compliance with those dollars. So we do a kind of a dual test, we look at your compliance, but at the same time, we gain an understanding of your internal controls, um, to ensure you have complied with the federal awards usage. So there's certain key areas of focus that we, we look at during the audit. One of the things that's consistent with any kind of an audit, it's not just your district, is, is the, the risk that management may override controls. Um, and this is just common in any entity. So the purposes of, of audits are to assess risk and then address them. So one of our approaches is to predict, you know, put in unpredictability into our audit procedures, emphasize professional skepticism, and then of course, we utilize audits that have, um, industry experience in K-12 school finance. And, you know, at the reas, at the end of the, the audit, we kind of come back to the board and say, well, did we have any challenges in our audit approach? And, you know, we did not, we were able to, you know, get enough assurances over all of our testing procedures that we felt very comfortable with, uh, the results of our audit evidence. Other key areas of emphasis that are consistent with your audit for your school district are cash and investments, payroll, capital assets, your revenue cycle. Some of the things that are pretty big numbers, you know, from a standpoint of long-term liabilities, relates to pensions and, and other post-employment benefit liabilities. The classification of your ending fund balances, your general disbursement cycle, so your accounts payable cycle, compliance with long-term debt, and then of course, all the required disclosures and the presentation of the financial statements themselves. So these are key areas of emphasis that we focus on during the course of our audit approach. And, and we walk through your internal control structure to ensure that, you know, we're tailoring and designing our audit approach effectively. Some of the things that are included in your financial statements are estimates. They're required, unfortunately, you know, you don't have all of the answers necessarily, so there's some best practices that are put into place that are allowable under the reporting standards, and our responsibility is to assess the reasonableness of those estimates and to determine if there's any challenges or disagreements, so to speak, as to the application of those assumptions. So some of the very large assumptions that are applied in your financial statements are the net pension liabilities. Those are determined by actuarial valuations, and, you know, we look at the inputs, the, the allocation of, um, how those expenditures are reported in the financial statements and the liabilities, the corresponding disclosures. You know, the same thing goes with the other post-employment benefits, which is essentially, um, you know, a liability that's carried on your financial statements for the district's plan, and then also for the participation of the district in the teachers' health insurance system. These are some fairly large liabilities that came online, you know, several years ago, and they're required to be reported under governmental auditing standards and accounting standards. Depreciation expense is another estimate, you look at the value of the assets, you estimate the useful life, and then those expenditures are randomly allocated over the life of the assets. And then the other one is the state of Illinois on-behalf payments, which is, uh, essentially, all school districts in the state of Illinois receive a benefit from the state of Illinois to make contributions to the pension system and the teachers' health insurance system, and those amounts are estimated and recorded in your financial statements. What's important to understand is that our audit determined that all of these estimates were reasonable. We did not have any concerns regarding them. So ultimately, the results of our audit is to render opinions on schedules and statements. So the district's comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR, we were able to render an unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that you can receive if the financial statements present fairly in all material respects with generally accepted accounting principles. We also rendered unmodified audit opinions on the Illinois State Board of Education Annual Financial Report, the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, and the consolidated year-end financial report. So ultimately, all of our reports were clean opinions, um, so to speak, you know, very good job, no issues there. You know, coming to a board meeting and having a comprehensive annual financial report and all of these different, you know, statements and schedules, there's a lot of information to consider and digest. The one thing that I usually always like to point out with the board is the income statement at the fund level, because this is how you manage the day-to-day of the district and think about how your resources are allocated in the future. You know, the conversation that I listened to this, this morning, prior to, to me coming online, is this, this document right here kind of helps you see that, and I'm, I'm sure you'll be talking a lot about this particular two pages, for, for, you know, as you, as you plan and forecast your capital projects, but what is a little bit different this year in your CAFR, from your prior year CAFR, is the fund presentation. So one of the things that we do is, is affirmed with K-12 reporting is we promote as many of your funds to major as allowed within the accounting standards. So previously, the district had consolidated a few extra funds into the general fund presentation, so you wouldn't necessarily see your operations and maintenance fund very, very clearly on the face of the financial statements. So, so this year, what you'll see is, we have a general fund. The general fund is your education fund, your working cash fund, and your tour fund. Those three funds have to be added together from a basic financial statement presentation. Then every other fund is presented to, to major, so you'll see your operations and maintenance fund, transportation fund, municipal retirement, social security fund. I like to think of this page on the left as your day-to-day operational funds. Okay, this is how you run the school district on, on a, on a daily basis. The right side, the debt service fund is used to account for dollars for paying off your long-term debt, specifically debt certificates, um, general obligation bonds. The capital projects fund is something that's been of, of significant focus, um, as the district considers the available resources that they have to fund significant capital endeavors, you know, construction, expansions of your classrooms. The state board recommends that you utilize a capital projects fund when you have significant capital, um, work to be performed and identified funding sources. So, so this fund is actually nice because it keeps your operations and maintenance fund kind of clean from the one-offs, the, the variances of capital work that can change from year to year. By placing those costs into capital projects fund, it becomes a little bit more transparent, and I think easier to see and plan for. And then the fire prevention and safety fund is, is really, for the most part, kind of an, an older carryover fund right now, doesn't have a lot of activity, so I won't focus on it too much, but. Ultimately, if we look at the district's financial results for fiscal year 20, we'll see that the general fund had an operational surplus of about $550,000, very, very close to break even for fiscal year 20. of about $550,000, very, very close to break even for fiscal year 20. The operations and maintenance fund had a surplus of about $4.3 million. Transportation fund about $300,000 and the municipal retirement fund of about $91,000. So when you see, when you see these, these, these line items, direct expenses, you know, compared to your direct revenues, you can see that the district is, is clearly on an operational basis in fiscal year 20, living within the available resources and then also generating some additional dollars for use in the future for capital projects. This category down here, other financing sources and uses is used to account for transfers between funds in addition to the allocation of, of bond proceeds and things of that nature. So during the year, you can see that there was some transfers. These were all approved by the board to, to move money between funds and then ultimately place some of those proceeds into the debt service fund to service the debt certificates in addition to placing proceeds into the capital projects funded to fund the expenditures for capital outlay during the year. Ultimately, if I look at the district's financial results as a whole, just kind of considering all of the funds together, at the end of the year, you had a, a net change in fund balance of about $2 million. So this is after considering your refinancing, the payoff of bonds, all of the facility work that was embarked upon during fiscal year 20. The district's fund position as a whole increased approximately $2 million from fiscal year 19. The Illinois State Board of Education kind of has the standard scoring metric that is used statewide. It's called the Financial Profile Score. It's something that every school district is, is measured at in the annual financial report form. I thought it would be helpful just to kind of stick this in the slides, just to show the board that you have still retained the four, you know, there's a 4.0 schedule, basically you can get as high as four points. And you've received that score on every metric that they have, fund balance ratio to revenues, expenditures to revenues, the amount of cash on hand, the short, short-term borrowing and long-term debt margin. That's outstanding. So you've received the recognition score in fiscal year 20, which is consistent with what you've received in, in the prior year as well. One other tidbit that I wanted to point out, and you're all very aware of this, but it is a disclosure in the financials.
Nick?
Yep.
May I ask a question on that last slide?
Yes.
So what throws me off in, in looking at our financials is the state's TRS contribution. I mean, just because they added it into our financials essentially, what, like in 2016 or 17? How does that play? You know, so it looks like it was, oh, I saw it, 15 million or so?
So here, yeah, I'd be that.
Yeah. Yeah, does it affect our ratios? On the next slide. 15 million, it looks like in 2020.
So 57 million to direct. Have to look. I have to go and double check the AFR like 57. I believe the on behalf is excluded.
Yeah, it's excluded to me. That's what I was asking.
Sure. So it's, it's, so I guess to your point is this, this particular line item, which I can spend a little bit of time on because I think this is an area when boards look at the CAFR and then they look at their budget, they look at their AFR and it's confusing because it's, it's basically a paper accounting transaction that really doesn't have an impact on your day-to-day operations. But the, the governmental accounting standards boards required that this amount is reported in your financial statements. And it's this concept of an on behalf. So every school district in the state of Illinois participates in the teachers' retirement system and the teachers' health insurance system. And as participating in that, the district makes contributions towards those systems and the district's employees make contributions to those systems. The state of Illinois also is making contributions to those systems on your behalf. You, they're, they're not the employer of, of, of your employees. There's a special funding circumstance that's in place. And the governmental accounting standards board says that you should reflect in your financial statements a revenue and an expenditure that is consistent with the amounts that the state has contributed to those systems on your behalf. So what we'll see on the face of your basic financial statements is right here, state retirement contributions. We line item that out separately on your, on your expenditures. You can kind of see how much has been placed in your, in your CAFR. So this is about $15 million that's recorded as an expenditure in the general fund. And then up here at the top in general, in the state aid line item, we all know that your district doesn't receive state funding of $18.1 million on an operational basis. This $18.1 million right here includes an increase of 14.9, exactly equal to this on behalf amount. So your, your, your revenues and your expenditures are grossed up for this dollar amount, this contribution, this estimated contribution that the state has made on your behalf. So when you're, when you're thinking about, you know, how this interrelates to your, your ongoing operations, you have to almost kind of say, that amount needs to be set aside, but for external reporting purposes, it's required to be reported.
I had a quick question to ask on that, but as long as you've been talking about it, it's easier to ask now than later. On page 59, and again, I'll try to make this real quick. In particular, at other places, it has the original budget, 22 million, then the actual budget, 15 million. Do we have enough information to put the accurate estimate in the budget or, I mean, I know it gets plus the minus out, but, um.
You know, that, I, I have a personal opinion on, on the on behalf amount for budgeting. It is a moving target and we, you know, as auditors don't necessarily get this information until like May. So you're, you're adopting your budget, you know, by, you know, the end of September, you know, in some cases earlier than that. And that, that information is, is not even available and it fluctuates from year to year because the on behalf payment is, you know, something that is estimated and based on a lot of inputs that you're not even going to get that information until several months after you have adopted your budget and it fluctuates from year to year. My recommendation to several of my clients is to, you know, exclude the on behalf payment from your budget because it really doesn't have, you know, any bearing on your ongoing, you know, operations. And we can put a reconciliation schedule in the financial statement notes that shows, you know, your, your budget without the on behalf payment and then shows how that relates back to the, the basic financial statements. And then what it does is it prevents you from having kind of the skew in your budget to actual results because you've missed your mark on the on behalf payment. Which, you know, at first glance, when you look at it, you might say, well, hold on, we overspent our budget. We underspent our budget. What's going on? And that very last line item can be impacted significantly by the on behalf. So, you know, one of the things I've recommended to several of my clients is, you know, stop budgeting for it because you don't know it and, and it changes very volatile and it's not going to have an impact on your day-to-day operations. So it's just something to consider.
I add, I'm going to add a little bit to what Frank says and, and conversations that, that I, that we've had in the past. And I think, I think our consensus in the past was we like to see it because we're very cynical, or some of us are. And, and if the state's going to require us to keep track of it, then maybe somebody thinks that we're going to owe it someday, which is why we like to see the number.
Yeah, you know, right now, um, you know, the contributions that the board is required to make are being met and they are much, 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 much less than this number. I mean, on, you know, TRS, it's, you know, half a percentage point on credible earnings. I think on THIS, I believe it's around 1%. So your, your annual contributions that you're making are very small. And until a legislative shift, you know, occurs, right now, this is just a paper entry. So, like I said, the governmental accounting standards board believes that this is an important number to present in your financial statements. From their perspective, it is a more holistic vision of what your, your ongoing, you know, costs are for pension and other post-employment benefits when a non-employer entity is making contributions on your behalf. But absolutely, I mean, I can understand your position as well. It's just important to understand what it is. It's, it's not an operational miss.
Yeah, no, we, we hear you, Nick.
Okay.
Is now, are you going to get more into the TRS liability or is, is now a good time to focus on?
I can, I mean, we can definitely jump around the, the financial statements. If you want, I can kind of finish up my presentation and then we can definitely jump around to any area that you'd like to talk specifically on.
Yeah, I, I had, if you don't mind, I had one, um, one question that's related to Frank's question and it's on page 53 of the financial statements and it's, it looks like the, um, what's called the state's proportional share of the net pension liability, which is $228 million. What kind of detail are you seeing from your other clients on that? Is this, is this sort of average detail or have you seen? Because it occurred to me just thinking about how our pension system works, there might make sense to break it up between the tier one and the tier two liabilities. So we could see that. And then the second question would be, do you see other clients projecting this into the future? So presumably with the change from tier one to tier two, the liability is going to go down at some point. So I'm curious about your views on that.
Sure. So, um, I guess I could speak a little bit to, you know, my understanding of the actuarial valuation and then the allocation of the, um, I guess pension liability as to how they, they distribute that across all the school districts in this state. So, um, TRS, THIS, they, you know, I guess if I'm going to speak to the pension, I'll, I'll speak to the pension. So TRS engages an actuary that performs a valuation to assess the liability of the pension system out into the future, discount it back. And then also give consideration to the value of the planned assets that are held at the end of the year, of the difference between that liability and the value of the planned assets is the net pension liability. And that net pension liability is then allocated using a, a consistent approach to all school districts in the state. And the approach is based on, um, contributions made to the pension system during that measurement period for that year. So what they do is they say, okay, how much did, you know, Wellmet School District 39 pay to TRS during the year? Compare that to all of the school districts in the state and then also compare that to the amount that the state of Illinois contributed to the pension system and then they come up with these allocations. Another firm performs some, some audit procedures and renders a report on that approach. And, you know, we do some, some census testing and other testing procedures to gain comfort that the inputs were reasonable for allocating that pension liability to your district. And then of course, the state's proportion. So that particular analysis is not based on tier one or tier two. It's the allocation is, is purely based upon contributions to the system. A few years ago, what they used to do was, and this was very, this was impactful and I'm glad that they kind of changed the approach, was, um, if you're a school district and you've received a significant amount of federal funding and you use those federal dollars to pay certified employees credible earnings, you were required to make an additional contribution to the teacher's retirement system. So your school district, as a result of receiving federal funds and using those funds to pay certified employees, paid more money to the TRS system. So what was happening was the, the allocation of the liability and the proportion of here for the state was, was being more weighted towards school district that used funds to, to pay teachers than for school districts that were not. I think it was two years ago, they, they removed that allocation piece for the federal contribution amount and they're basically just kind of consistently using the 0.58 contribution. So either this is, you, you know, the allocation methodology is not based on tier one or tier two. Now, could you take that same report and, you know, you know, consider who's a tier one school, who's a tier two school? I'm assured, but it's not required to be done at all right now. Does that answer your question or was that?
No, it does. It, it sounds to me like the visibility is limited. So.
Yeah, you, you know, at, at the end of the day, right now, it's, it's, it's an allocation methodology. What I, you know, tell boards is this is not a current liability. You don't have to, you know, test right now. It's, it's an allocation from accounting standards. You know, what you do need to stay aware of is, you know, legislative matters that could potentially shift, you know, the pension burden back to school districts. You know, and the way they, you know, a lot of, a lot of school districts have kind of, you know, for several years included some kind of estimate in the event of, you know, if the contribution rate increased X percent, you know, what would that impact be to our operational results, so to speak. But for now, they really haven't changed that contribution amount. It's stayed flat for several years. So, so one, I, I took a quick screenshot of, um, a note in the financial statements. This is a required disclosure. So your, your district, as you all are very familiar with, refunded some bonds during fiscal year 20. And as a result of refunding those bonds, you actually reduced your debt service payments over the next seven years by about $480,000. And then that present value calculation of that savings was about $423,000. You know, this is just one of those financial highlights that, you know, I wanted to point out. This is a good, good stewardship of the district's resources to take advantage of, you know, good market conditions and refinance debt and save, you know, your community money in, in the long run. So this is something I got to pull out and bring to everyone's attention today. The, the district is required to have a single audit performed. A single audit is a federal compliance audit. It's, it's required to be performed if you expend over $750,000 of federal awards. Your district expended approximately $1.2 million of federal awards during fiscal year 20. We're required to audit, um, major programs. So programs that are over $750,000 was considered to type A programs. And, and you know, if there's any riskier programs, they're considered type B. We would have to consider those and then we might alternate with them. But, you know, long and short of it is the overwhelming majority of your federal awards rests within the special education cluster, the IDEA program, which is like your flow-through program, the pre-K program, room and board. The total expenditures of those awards was about $1 million. So the brunt of your federal expenditures is within your IDEA award. And the type of opinion we were able to render on your compliance with those dollars was an unmodified audit opinion. So again, the highest level of assurance that there were no compliance issues. We're also required to test internal controls over certain compliance areas to determine that you, you know, have appropriate internal controls in place to ensure compliance takes place. And we did not identify any, you know, material weaknesses within that control structure. So, you know, again, a clean opinion regarding your internal control structure over compliance for internal controls. So, good, good job on the single audit as well for the district. One of the things that is required to be issued by the external auditor is a report on internal control over financial reporting and other matters based on, um, you know, regulations and compliance with laws that we may identify during the course of our audit. So, you know, earlier in the presentation, I, I spoke that, you know, the purposes of us to look through your internal controls over financial reporting is to plan, design and ensure that we appropriately test, um, you know, the inputs into the financial statements to ensure they're free of material of statement. Our responsibility is not to render an opinion on your financial or on your internal control structure. We actually don't render an opinion. However, during the course of our audit, during the course of our walkthroughs, everything, if we identify risks in your internal controls over financial reporting, we're required to communicate those to. we're required to communicate those to the governing body and to management. And during the course of our audit, we did not identify any material weaknesses at all. So, you know, very good, well-designed internal control structure, you know, from somebody who came in cold, looking at things, you know, using the software to ensure systemic controls are in place, good monitoring controls, you know, you can just tell even from saying in this meeting that the board is very active in the management of the financial results, you know, taking the, the good steps to make sure that the funds are available to, for capital projects. You know, these are all things that I'm looking at as your auditor to, you know, gain an understanding of, you know, what's gonna happen for the year and how does that correlates to your financial statements. So. And then also lastly, this is kind of the last piece of that report, which is, if we identify any compliance issues with laws or regulations, we're required to communicate those to the governing body. And I'm pleased to let the board know as well that no such matters arose during the course of our audit. Under auditing standards, there's a few things that we're required to communicate, some, you know, key points. If we, if we have any difficulties encountered in performing our audit or disagreements with management regarding estimates, accounting policies, accounting procedures, things of that nature, we had no such disagreements during the course of our audit. Wanted to just, you know, inform the board, I've, I've had several conversations with Corey about this. There is a new accounting standard that will be effective for fiscal year twenty-one. It's known as the fiduciary activities standard. What it's going to change in your financial statements is that your student activity accounts will be presented within your general fund. Current auditing standards allow for you to present your student activity assets, receipts, disbursements within an agency fund in the financial statements. In fiscal year twenty-one, that activity will need to be consolidated within your, your general fund. So you will see, you know, student activity receipts, student activity disbursements, ending fund balances, cash, within your general fund. And this is based on the new rules for determining fiduciary funds. We've done a significant amount of research on this matter. It worked with state board. And, you know, ultimately, we were landed, based on the administrative code and the day-to-day operations of those funds, it's basically gonna render that those club accounts get pulled into your general fund. For AFR reporting, that'll be in your ed fund as well. So I, I'm pretty much concluded with my slide deck, but I would definitely welcome the opportunity to address any questions that the board may have regarding the audit approach or any balances in the financial statements at this time.
Yeah, no, thanks, Nick. This is a really nice presentation. We obviously really appreciate the work that you and your team has done for us. So I do want to ask, though, are any other board members interested in asking any questions? Okay, I would say this, you know, speaking on, I think, my behalf and on behalf of the finance committee, yeah, we do really appreciate what you guys have done for us. Frankly, one of the reasons that we did pick, the management team picked you guys was our expectation of this kind of performance, and also that, that you guys would bring us value-added ideas and potential services. So I'd encourage you to do that. Because we're definitely interested in trying to stay on the leading edge here of managing the financials of our district.
You know, you know, one thing that I noticed, you know, right out of the gate here, is that there's a plan, and the plan is constantly being worked and constantly being reevaluated. Most important thing, you know, you, you get into the details sometimes and lose sight of the forest a little bit. But, but what I, what I noticed, just looking at your, the end results of your fiscal year twenty audit, you know, okay, so here, here's where they landed. What's the plan for twenty-one? You know, and I saw, look at your state budget form, and I can see, you know, okay, well, there's, there's this surplus in the operations and maintenance fund. Right? What's the plan for that? You know, it's, it's a sizable surplus. Oh, hold on, now we've got all this capital project work that we're, we're thinking through and making sure that we're using those funds appropriately. You know, surpluses that are, don't have a plan, well, then those, well, what are you gonna do, or why do you have the surpluses? It becomes kind of the question. So, you know, coming in cold and looking at your financial results, looking at your fiscal year twenty-one budget, knowing the challenges that you have because of the pandemic, the increased cost, weighing all those, readdressing your five-year plan as new information becomes available, is, is all best practice, great stuff to be doing. You know, and, and I think that, from my standpoint, coming in and looking at how you're, you're, you're managing the district's finances is a very good job. You know, I didn't see anything, to me, that was concerning. I love the idea that you're reissuing, you know, issuing bonds to save money, and then you're getting proceeds, and those proceeds have a specific capital need. You know, if you're issuing bonds for operational purposes, that can be indicative of, you know, a bigger systemic operational issue. No such matters like that were identified at all during the audit. So, you know, and Corey and I touch base throughout the audit. I'm excited to be working with, with him, and quite honestly, the entire business office team, everybody was really great to work with, so.
All right, well, thank you so much for your time. Oh, oh, hold on, we have.
I had a real quick follow-up, but if you had something.
I'll be really quick.
Yeah, go ahead, Ellen.
I just wanted to say, as, as not a financial expert, that this report was really well-done. I, I wanted to echo what John said. You know, I, I really wanted to thank you for the presentation. It was incredibly thorough and beyond expectation. So thank you for that. It's, it's, it's gonna be very, I think, easy for our constituents to also understand it and follow it and be able to really see what we do and why we do it. And that's, that's really important. So, thank you.
Frank first.
I just had a quick follow-up to what you were saying. Audit is great. One of the advantages of, of an audit is to make sure that we're doing things right, and you've identified that we are and that we're doing best practices. Another advantage, I think, of having an audit firm come in is that they can bring outside perspective. And you did touch on that in terms of the things we're doing our best practice, but if there are any other best practice things that, that you've run across in the other audits you've done, and in particular, how other school districts are reacting to COVID, you know, bringing that knowledge, you know, the, the, some of the knowledge of all the people that you deal with might give us some ideas that have some value. So if you find something or know something like that, if you could make sure you pass that on.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think, you know, one of the benefits that we bring to the table is, I mean, we're very schools-focused. I mean, we work with, I, I think right now, we're up to, you know, somewhere along the lines of sixteen school districts and joint agreements in the state of Illinois. So you have a broad network of, you know, very, very good skilled, you know, business managers that you work with and team members and the business office and boards and all of those things. And, you know, everybody is, you know, really thinking through the challenges of, of the pandemic, you know, and how they can identify opportunities or recover costs and things like that. And, you know, even the CARES Act funding and how that runs through your school district. You know, your, your district as a whole doesn't receive a significant amount of, of additional federal funding as a result of, you know, the increased costs that you have had to incur. The area to look into potentially, and I think it's, it's challenging because a lot of, it's untarded water, is FEMA grants, and how that could potentially be used to claim expenditures in regards to the pandemic's response. You know, we, we have assisted a few other school districts with, you know, figuring out what they can do to claim that from the standpoint of the application. But again, it's, you know, with FEMA, the problem with that is you're gonna get about seventy-five percent of whatever you can claim. And right now, everybody's just kind of filling out the claim, and, and nobody has any insight as to what's gonna get, you know, reimbursed. So you kind of almost start real high, and you, you hope that, you know, you can get something out of it. The CARES Act, it's called the, every, I forget what it is, it's under SRR, but essentially it's the COVID-nineteen response funding was, was allocated based upon Title-I allocations throughout the state. So your school district receives a very small allocation of Title-I dollars, and as a result of that, you receive a very small allocation of the CARES Act funding. You know, so I think the best practices that I'm seeing out there is that your school districts are trying to identify those increased costs, keep, keep a schedule of those, staying current, you know, developing matters, and, you know, kind of work, work the plan that you have in place operationally, but then also giving consideration to your capital needs at the same time. So you don't get too far ahead of your skis, you know, where you dip down and your fund balance is lower than what you're comfortable with.
Lisa, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you, but also the district for another clean, speaky-clean audit. Nice job to Corey and his team.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, you know, I'll add one, one point. I, I think it's important to understand that your, your business office has taken the, I, I think they're operating at a higher level than you see at most business offices in the sense that they do all of the modified accrual year-end conversion entries. So your, your day-to-day operations, the, the way you maintain your accounting records on a cash basis, but for external reporting purposes, you have to give consideration to things that are owed to you at the end of the year or monies that you owe to somebody else. It's this modified accrual reporting basis. So your, your business office does all of this analysis, prepares those word papers, records those entries, provides us with a trial balance that has all that information already in there. So, you know, it's kind of this next step level of, of, of owning the, 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 the financial statements. You know, we do work with a lot of school districts in the state, and in some instances, they will, you know, engage us to do that work for them, and they take ownership and responsibility of it. But your business office does do that work, you know, in-house. So it's important to understand that they are spending more time in preparing the financial statements, and, and I think that there's a lot of value to that because you start to think through things a little bit differently because you're putting it together and seeing it, and, and helps you forecast and consider, you know, the district's financial statements for forecasting purposes, too.
Yeah, thank you for that. We're very spoiled, we know. So should I turn it over to you, Corey, I think, and to move to the next?
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone. Be safe, please.
So I just want to quickly kind of piggyback the, now that we've kind of wrapped up and got our final audit report. Let me go ahead and share my screen, since we have some remote people. All right, so should have been included with some of the documents we previously received, but so now that we're done, kind of one of the things that I, I like to do is just kind of have like a one-page takeaway of, of the audit, you know, the financial statements. And since, you know, internally, we focus a lot on the operating funds and have that internal target of maintaining at least forty percent. You know, I thought it would be important to highlight the, the, you know, if you look at the top line, you know, back in August of nineteen, the, when the board adopted the budget, you're looking at a deficit of one point seven million. Through the actual results, those same operating funds increased by one point nine million. So you have, you do have a sizable difference from where, where you thought at one point and where you finished. I kind of detailed out the differences from budget to actual. It's where everyone can get a feel. You know, from my perspective, the top four line items, you know, those are the big, well, the first three line items, you know, those are the big ones, right? I mean, on the revenue side, eighty-four percent is property taxes. You know, a similar, very large amount, overwhelming in any school district is gonna be salaries and benefits. So, you know, as it relates to fiscal year twenty, those were, you know, to, to the positive. And then kind of the unique outlier that was a very sizable amount was when the district refunded and issued bonds. They were able to receive an additional one million dollars in proceeds. And then the below those, those four line items, you have several other, you know, smaller amounts, some of them, you know, are still in the six figures. But as I scanned through them, you know, almost universally, a lot of those variances, you know, could be attributable to what happened in the last four months of the year with COVID and, and, you know, things just, you're going along thinking you're having a, a normal school year, and things just in a snap of a finger has changed. So those contributed, you know, to the variance as well, but, you know, from my perspective, the, the bigger focus is on the top. So, you know, where does that leave, you know, the operating funds at the end of fiscal year twenty? You're looking at it right at about seventy percent fund balance. You know, and so one thing I would, would offer up is when we passed the fiscal year twenty-one budget in August, we said that based upon the fiscal years twenty and twenty-one budget, we would end fiscal year twenty-one at a forty-one point two-four percent fund balance. Now that we have actual, you know, confirmed results, you know, we're looking at, with the, with fiscal year twenty-one's budget, ending the year at like forty-seven and chain, forty-seven percent, a little over that for fund balance. Obviously, you know, that's pending what's, what will happen throughout the rest of fiscal year twenty-one, but from what I've seen so far, you know, both COVID and non-COVID-related expenditures, fiscal year twenty-one is, is tracking to be on budget with what we passed. So, so, you know, I think we're looking at, you know, forty-seven percent or potentially slightly higher. That's really all that I had related to the audit at this point. I don't know if anybody has any additional questions, or if not, I will move on to the property taxes.
Well, first off, good, good work with audit. That's nice praise from the audit firm. So that reflects your work in the school district as a whole. So good work. Also, the fact that, I mean, soon next week, we'll see the, or next maybe the whole meeting, we'll see updates on the reserve projections, et cetera, but that's just what you said, of forty-seven versus forty-one is is great. I mean, forty-one was like right on the, you know, it's, it's really gonna dip down because there's always some plus and minus. Forty-seven gives us a little buffer, so that, that was good news to hear from you. I was trying to look at this delta because three point six million is a big delta. And some of it is one-time things like the bond issue. Some of it is obviously COVID-related. I came up with a structural number ballpark of about eight hundred thousand, which is not terrible. Certainly compared to looking at a three point six million. But in particular, the salaries and benefits, is that COVID-related, or is that, why, why were those two numbers in benefits tied to salaries? But why, why is the salaries?
So from what I can see, part of it would be COVID-related, but other part of it would just be I'm preparing a budget in a very conservative manner and, and you know, keeping some wiggle room in there. So, you know, since I wasn't here, I, I don't really have a a great answer of, you know, what percentage might have been COVID and what might have been just kind of a very conservative approach to, to the budgeting process. But it's certainly something that, as I, you know, went through and calculated all this out, that caught my attention as well.
And the board will recall, last year, we had some conversations around this, and because last year's audit showed something similar, where there was, there were some excess dollars once we reviewed everything. And so we try, we, we tend to, as a, as a district, as a board, you direct us to budget conservatively, and we think that's the safe way to go, to ensure that we have the dollars to support our operations throughout the school year. Last year, we did make some adjustments, and so we should have seen that come down a little bit. And then with COVID, there was, there were some excess dollars associated with that. And so it is a, a bit of a combination of both conservative budgeting and the impact of COVID.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to get a feel for those two. The, the, the other question then is, it, it comes up sometimes, they have the, the takeaway number of did we run a deficit? Did we run a surplus for the year? What, what is that number that if, if asked, or, you know, we're talking about it, that, that we should say?
Talking about what, for last year?
Yeah, net, net, net for two thousand and twenty fiscal year, I mean, it looks like we ran a surplus, which is good, but, you know, what, what is that number approximately, you know, that, that we can talk about if the question comes up?
That, that is something I'll have to look at. It's not really, I guess, like I'm aware, like, you know, when you look at, I'm sure we'll see next month when we do the five-year forecast, you know, one of the things that we're, we're in a position where, as we talked about earlier with the capital projects, is, you know, once you have your traditional operating expenses, if you do have some additional, you know, annual dollars there, you can allocate some of that towards capital projects. You know, that's something that when you look at, um, the, the O and M fund, that's where you typically see where the revenues are quite a bit higher than the expenditures and it transferred over to the capital projects. So I think that's really something that we will look at next month as far as like, what is, what is truly there? And looking at it over a five-year period of like, okay, I showed you that kind of summary of what we, you know, going back, you know, six months or a year, whatever it was for capital projects, that's where we will kind of like dive in. How do those projects that we talked about previously still fit in?
Yeah, that, I mean, last for two thousand nineteen, I think when it finally net, netted out, it was somewhere in the four hundred to five hundred thousand dollar range. And it was just handy to to have a final number that said, you know, how did you do for the year? Well, you know, we're four hundred thousand dollar surplus, which is good surplus. It's not excessive on a six million, sixty million dollar budget. So it kind of checks the two boxes that we're close and it was in the positive direction. And it'd be good to have that kind of a talking point number for the two thousand twenty fiscal year. So, that's all, that's.
Yeah, go ahead Mark.
Just make a quick point that we did set a red line, I think it was at seventy percent and we're slightly above that. And so what we've said is our practice should be that we discuss what we do to address that. I don't think we're going to have any trouble addressing that. But I, but just from a point of procedure, that is what we said we, we would do.
Oh, thanks for pointing that out.
Think about how to handle that.
When to have that discussion. Alright, thank you, Mark.
And I think that's why the administrative team continues to feel comfortable with pursuing and continuing the conversation around capital improvements. Uh, despite some of the unknowns, we now have some experience to know what the COVID pandemic, um, the impact has on our budget and on our expenses. And yet we continue to feel comfortable pursuing the projects that at least have been laid out through this summer. Uh, but we appreciate the board's direction on that as well.
I had a somewhat related question that goes to Heather, I think mostly, sorry Heather. So I, I love this demographic detail of the personnel on page one hundred and ten.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, very helpful. Um, and it shows, you know, for the year end twenty twenty that we had five hundred and eighty-one, uh, people who worked for the district. Any more do we have or how many less do we have this year? Just given, um, what's going on with, uh, COVID and I know we've been on a hiring binge. But I'd like to get some idea of the scale of that.
I, I think we're about around six hundred. We, I don't have the official count. We do an official count every November and we use that as
Oh, is that right?
Official count for the entire school year. So it hasn't been done just yet, but we're about it.
Around six hundred, okay, thank you.
That's rough.
Alright, oh yeah, no, appreciate that. Off the cuff.
No.
Answer that's, no, it's great. Yeah, because it's, you know, it's, we're, we're all thinking about the same thing, right? Incurring the expense and, and whether we could justify it. And, and in COVID, you know, my personal issue is you, you don't want to underreact. You don't want to overreact. So you want to kind of be right in the middle. I would expect most of us would agree with that. Alright, oh Lisa.
Yeah, but I do want to just reflect, this is good news, right? We were expecting a possible doomsday scenario.
Right.
And this is not it.
Yeah. Agreed, thanks for pointing that out.
Yep.
Okay, I think, yeah, you have another thing.
Just one quick thing.
Yep.
So, you know, we had talked about, I think, you know, back in the late summer. You know, a, as we passed the budget about, you know, property taxes and, and the fact that that drives one half of our equation almost exclusively. And so I wanted to, and I had mentioned that, you know, with Cook County delaying that second installment to, to an October first due date, that once you had let a month after that due date go by, that would probably be a natural point to take a, take a look at, how are we doing compared to the prior year? You know, is there any like red flags or things we should be worried about? So, um, so I compared, you know, to where we at last year. So through the end of October, we are about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars behind where we were in fiscal year twenty. At this point, um, when you take the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, our total property tax budget is fifty-six point four million dollars. That, that comes out to point six-two percent. You know, our budget assumes that we're going to have a ninety-seven point nine percent collection rate. Um, you see in our audit that historically we assume about one and a half percent is uncollectible. So, you know, typically what I've seen working in Cook County most of my career is that November, December, January are very slow months. You might get some very small distributions, you get some small refunds that are processed. You don't see typically a lot of movement until you get into February. People start to pay their bill in the early, early parts of February or mid parts of February. Um, so it's probably not, I probably won't, you know, take a, you know, take a look at it until maybe at the end of December or January, just unless something big were to, were to pop through. But, um, from my perspective, yeah, we're a little bit behind. But I don't feel like it's something that I, that I would be overly worried about. It's, it's, yeah, three hundred and fifty thousand is a lot of money, but in the grand scheme of like that line item, it's certainly something that you could, I could easily see us, you know, collecting a majority of that before February even comes around. So I think the takeaway from my perspective is that, you know, I did this look back and the number's not one point five million or two, or we sit there and we look at it and say, okay, like people aren't paying their property tax, you know, like there's something going on. You know, we're, we're, you know, we're fairly close, so.
My comment, I mean, that's really helpful. And that's nice to hear, actually. So, and I know you're all over this other issue of the, uh, the appeal activity. Do, do you have any sense of the appeals activity?
You know, what's interesting is like I, I have not received like, I would be the person who would be contacted, you know, when, when like notices come out. And it has been extremely light, almost nonexistent. Um, the only thing that I would maybe offer up is that it's a non, non-assessment year in, in people. I know in some cases, people, when they come to an agreement, especially on larger properties, whether it's home or businesses, they will work out a multi-year, you know, a, a value instead of having to, you know, whereas maybe if you had a smaller home and you're testing, you know, contesting five or ten thousand dollars in value, you know, probably wouldn't, you know, a multi-year agreement wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't occur. But, um, honestly, I haven't seen a lot of, a lot of activity. I'm sure there's some going on, but it's not what we would have seen in, in prior years so far.
Yeah, Ellen.
This might be a good question for Carrie. But it, and it's something that I brought up actually for conversation later, but it ties into this conversation. Is there something going on legislatively right now with ISB, um, at the government level? In terms of refiguring the, the, the whole funding model right now? Because it sounds like they changed all of their policies and, and, I mean, they're, they're wanting, like they went, ISB changed all of their policies in regards to taxes and PTAS and everything. And in, in preparation to, I think, change their whole funding model with, at the state level. That's what it looked like in their resolutions. So I'm just wondering if you've heard anything at the state level right now, or have you heard anything about that? Because it looked pretty clear that, about what they were asking. Is there?
I, I don't have anything to add on that particular front. But if we're going to talk about the state level, the one comment that I, that I would add is worth keeping an eye on. Now granted, we're very, we only get a couple of million dollars from, from state aid. But with the, um, graduated income tax amendment being rejected, you know, the, the, the broader education funding bill that will impact a lot of districts included assumption that that was going to pass. And just the few comments that I've read from Governor Pritzker has been that, you know, doom and gloom and we're going to cut. And so when I sit here and I, in the chair that I'm in, you know, we're, we're in that top tier of evidence-based funding where we get so little. So i- if times are tough, you know, right? So the state, the, the Springfield has two options, one, right? You know, raise the rate on everybody or do they try and cut a bunch of stuff? And so, yeah, we might be an easy target along with some other like tier four districts that don't get a lot of state funding. But the reality is even if they wanted to target us, it's not going to achieve their goal of cutting a lot of money. You could take a lot of, you could take money from us, but in some of our neighboring districts. But in the grand scheme, it doesn't solve their issue. So I think it's certainly something to, once we get into twenty twenty-one and, um, and beyond to see, you know, what might happen there. I think we do have some, given what happened, there, there's probably some level of, of exposure, which, you know, they've been upfront about. But, um, you know, I, I, they've always talked about like cold harmless amounts, what you had prior to the transition a few years ago. So, um, it's, that's probably my only comment as it relates to the state.
Yeah.
Thank you.
More later.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, that's really good work. Um, okay, I'm gonna.
One last comment.
Oh yeah.
The, this, uh, so I gave you guys, everybody, um, like physical copies of stuff. If you want to keep it, that's fine. If you realize you don't want it and it would just be a paperweight or whatever, just leave it there and we'll pick it up.
Oh, okay. Alright. I'm going to turn it back over to you Lisa.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody on that one. Next we have strategy committee items. I turn the meeting over to Strategy Chair, Mark Steen.
I'll turn it right over to everything else, Chair Carrie Kermitskoli.
Thank you. We actually, um, are eagerly looking forward to a meeting this week with the CRC and the CEC uh, related to our strategic planning efforts. But as has become our tradition at this point, we also give reopening updates under the strategy committee. And so today we are eager to provide the board with several updates and to receive, um, some feedback, uh, as well. So we will start with, um, our review of our remote learning program and the next steps and action steps that have been identified by a team, a committee of people who have gotten together to review the data and the feedback that we reviewed with the board previously and identify the most important ways in which we can continue to improve. So I will let Katie Lee speak. Um, and Kelly Jackson is joining us remotely, I believe, uh, to also contribute to this report.
Yeah, thank you. Well, that was my entire lead-in, so I would like to do, that's, it's wonderful. I would like to just, um, thank the teachers and the administrators that were a part of, um, this committee meeting. And so they're listed on the screen for you. Um, I figured since we have some remote people, I would also display it in the shared screen. So in this, we have many great ideas that came from this committee discussion. But what we wanted to do was at least update the board on the recommendations and the action items we felt confident that we can do immediately. So one of the, um, recommendations was addressing the needs of the remote class sizes. And as you know, we can't reduce the number of students, but we can address some of the needs that the class size would, would be needed. So, um, the next part you've all heard, it was during the board meeting in October where we presented to you the data. And so we just wanted to show that this recommendation has supporting data from the surveys that, um, were conducted. And so for this one, um, for the elementary grades PK, um, to four, a couple of things really stood out about the small group instruction idea. Um, and coupled with the intent or the, um, quantity of online synchronous time that the parents were saying was maybe a little too much, um, for our students. And so if you were to look at the three items listed here under the action item, um, it would be really investigating and exploring ways how to be flexible with that synchronous time, but also get more personalized time with the teacher in smaller groups and prioritizing that. So what we want to do is we've always been looking at, how can we provide additional adult assistance for the instructional aspects? But on top of that, let's look at how we are using our synchronous, synchronous time and maximizing it with small group instruction. Kelly, are you there for five eight?
Yeah, I think along the similar lines, we, um, you know, we can't change the class sizes at this moment in time. And so, um, but we can limit switching, um, at this point from hybrid to remote. We continue to get requests on that and we, um, unless there's really a unique circumstance, an illness or something like that, that, then we would move, um, somebody. But at this point in time, we really are limiting the switching. Um, it's not great for the kids, they have to change their whole, um, setup and it's not great for the class community as a whole. Um, and so that helps us to keep the class sizes manageable. And I think additionally, providing support for small group learning structures, instruction, how do we do this creatively? How do we break the kids up and give them some more, um, small group time with their teachers and, and have a more, um, intimate setting from which to learn. So we'll be doing some of that work.
Thanks, Kelly. The second recommendation that came out of both groups was increasing those opportunities for social and peer interactions, especially during the school day. And so this is just the data that we presented to you again, um, to support. So in PK four, well, as you can see, really it more focused in the five eight student surveys than it did for elementary. But we didn't want to ignore the feedback of elementary as well. So we just came up with a couple of things that the teachers thought of. You know, allowing for fifteen minutes of socialization during morning meeting time, uh, would be a great way. And then the interest groups, a lot of, um, students have interest in Legos or whatever that may be. It's this new game, um, that is spreading over all of her children. But, uh, maybe using parents to volunteer in monitoring those interest-based, um, sessions with something that, wow, that'd be great, uh, to be able to implement.
At five eight, I, we have already started, um, some lunch bunches hosted by social workers. So a social worker will meet remotely with a small group of kids just to socialize and also to make some connections and lead them through some, um, conversation. Um, and that's gone really successfully in the grades that we've tried it in. And so we'd like to expand that a little bit more, um, to continue to foster some of those interactions. One thing that we made the choice not to do at the beginning of the year was to have remote room parents or to have room parents really. Um, the teachers didn't really identify that as a need, but that's something through these discussions that we thought, especially for our remote teams, we could, um, utilize the room parent structure in our PTO to help build in some of those, um, social opportunities, especially outside of the school day. I know our PTO is really active and coming up with great ways to connect. So we're going to look at that. Um, and then also providing time for teachers to can collaborate over student connection activities. So some of our teachers, um, are really, um, using homeroom time or using even, uh, social studies time um, at five, six for some SEL lessons and doing some really neat things. And so we want to provide some opportunities for all of our remote teachers, fifth through eighth grade, to share what's going well and maybe how they can build on some of that, uh, SEL work that they're doing. So, uh, kind of taking what we're doing and, and expanding it, making it better.
Um, and the third recommendation was really about balancing online time with offline time. And the reason we stated it this way is because it's not always synchronous time with the teacher. It is even when you're asking our students to work, they're online or they are using screen time. And so we thought that was really important to call out. Um, so a couple of, of items that came up was when our elementary, um, class schedules were reviewed or initially made, uh, we did at least, we worked on at least, you know, two and a half, but we often find that there's more. There's more of that online time, so we just want to reevaluate and make sure that, that holistically, we're ensuring that students have that real clear balance. Because maybe we went, as we always do, above and beyond, um, some of those expectations. Explore, these were great suggestions from our student services staff to exploring the possibility of related services to co-treat, reducing those synchronisms. possibility of related services to co-treat, reducing those synchronisms session times. So it might be a social worker and an occupational therapist working together at the same time. I thought that was a wonderful suggestion from the team. Providing that consistent two-way communication between special ed staff and families so that they could collaborate and identify what those priorities are for their students. And then also just really, again, dovetails with the first one, reprioritizing small group learning sessions over whole groups, making that synchronous time much more effective and targeted.
And you'll see at five eight, we have very similar things. I think the, looking at our two and a half hours of time is, is really important. Again, I think a lot of our teachers have gone above and beyond with the synchronous learning time. So really looking at how do we intentionally plan for synchronous or asynchronous learning or some independent opportunities to try to create a better balance for our kids? We heard a lot from the student responses that they are looking for some of those more asynchronous opportunities. Again, the similar recommendations from our student services team. And then that final box, just talking about utilizing Mondays. So as you know, in-person Mondays are, are, we have had remote days for our in-person kids on Mondays, and that's a mix of synchronous and asynchronous learning, really synchronous during core classes. But for our remote team, looking at Mondays as using it more to do that flexible grouping and instruction and some of those asynchronous learning opportunities for students. So we have some creative arts classes, actually, that have been trying to implement this model where they've used it to, hey, you know, I've noticed you haven't submitted three assignments, so let me talk to you and meet with you one-on-one, and let's talk about what's going on with you. Or, hey, small group, let's review this so that I know that you really are understanding this concept before you go further this week. And that's been very effective for those teachers. And so again, taking what some people are doing and trying to build upon that in a, in a flexible fashion and utilizing a structure that we already have in place.
The last but not least recommendation is improving communication for remote-only families. And this feedback really was targeted for the district-level communications as well as some building level. So a couple of items, well, on both, there's an enhanced remote learning page we'd like to create off of the family toolbox to communicate any of those district-level information that the parents are needing and wanting. So for example, it may house, you know, what are our plans to shift in the second semester so that the parents can go there and they could see the information all in one place and try to streamline for our remote learners. We also would like to support our teachers in proactively communicating, reaching out a little bit more about their student class engagement or how they're doing in, in school. Their, the parents seem to express that they're craving a little bit more of proactive communication in that realm. And then the building-level administrators are reviewing their newsletters. What they've done over the course of time and are always open to improving is making sure that the content is relevant to all. It's really important for that whole school community feel that all the information or most of them is relevant to all the students, whether it's in-person or remote.
And again, at five eight, it mirrors elementary. And you'll see the room parents there again, excuse me, utilizing the room parents as another venue for communication and getting out messages more broadly. We kind of do vary, I know, from high crests to the junior high with how we're communicating with our remote families from an administrator standpoint, but continuing to improve that and utilizing our GLADS more, I think will be a key with that as well.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, that's all. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Have questions? Hi. It, it looks like we have identified a couple of specific things to work on and we're getting to work on them, so that's great. I guess my one question was, is there any, or how would you characterize the overall response to, are you happy with the remote, the enhanced remote learning? And what's the sort of question data that, that would be able to support that, that answer?
Yeah, I, I would actually say that majority of our families in the enhanced remote program are happy. They sing praises on the teachers and the work and the connections there. They believe that their children are learning at the most part, you know, and progressing. They're not all that concerned about that learning progress, but they just want to be more informed, just because I think this year of all years, our parents are more informed, being remote, you know, remote learner families. So overall, I think that they are very positive about the program. We have pockets that we need to address, and that's what we're trying to do with this action plan.
I would echo that as well. I think that, you know, on a regular basis, when we're talking with parents in our programs, they are, they are saying, you know, this, your teachers are working really hard. And in the kids, I would say too, from reading through their responses on these surveys, they, they're, they're happy that they're learning, there's, yes, there's things we can do to improve, but they feel like they're confidently learning and growing in their academics for sure, so.
That's, that's terrific to hear. And I guess my one comment would be on the communication, and if we do this in the board, I, I think I would start with that message and whatever data supports that, whatever question or whatever data we can point to and say, oh, yeah, this is how we know that overall, we're doing pretty well, but we know we have some pockets and, and so then dive down on the other stuff. But thank you. I think this is, I, I really like this report. Oh, sorry, Amy.
No, so first, I just applaud you asking and looking and really wanting to know the truth of our family's experience, so I'm very grateful for that. And I guess I would ask, is there anything, it didn't rise up, so maybe not, but is there anything as a board we should be thinking about or that you're specifically thinking about for the special ed population in the remote only?
So I think our children who, who have IEPs, this is, remote learning for many of them is a struggle just because they really benefit from that, the personal touch, being able to really read the, the facial expressions and everything. I think that we have reached out numerous times with many of our families and have been working to try and make this the most valuable experience we can. That being said, things come up and we try to be really responsive. We are definitely hearing very different things. So one family may say that my child is on Zoom way too much, and so then we wanna work with them about, okay, so how do we, how do we prioritize? Because they do have additional services that other children may not. So they may be getting their two and a half hours of general education service on Zoom and then an additional 30 minutes, 45 minutes, hour every day of special ed support. So we are trying to really customize some of that with families and really talk about, maybe there are parts that we need to prioritize. Those are the times that we might look at, maybe what we need to do is have the related services co-treat, or maybe we look at another subject area where it's just, they'll be on for the lesson and then they'll jump off or whatever. It's, it's trying to work on that. And then we have really unique things, you know, children learning in their home setting is very different than learning in a school setting. So it's really trying to problem solve and help, help set up things so that we can reengage children who have sort of lost interest. I mean, it's hard. As adults, we're having a hard time spending all day or many hours a day on a Zoom. And if you're a child who has an attention deficit or who may be struggling with the general class instruction because you have a little bit of a processing difference, it, it makes it even more difficult. But it's, it's really about making sure that we have those communications and that close connection between the parents and the LBS, who can then bring in the resources we need to problem solve for that specific situation. Does that help? Yes.
Questions on this report? Thank you very much, and I have a feeling we're gonna keep talking about similar things, so.
That's right. So just a reminder to the board, just as we did a targeted review of our enhanced remote learning program, we followed with a targeted review of our in-person program. And we've gathered that data and are putting together the report. During the next week's board meeting, we will present the survey results for the in-person program review as a means of updating the board at that time, and then we'll follow the similar suit and identify some action steps that we'll summarize at the December committee of the whole meeting.
Three.
It sure does. So we are, we've been working really hard to consider second semester enrollment commitment process. There are a lot of unknowns, and right now especially, as we're seeing surges in our community spread, there are probably even more unknowns now than there were even two weeks ago. Yet, we need to plan for making sure that families have the options that we committed to providing them for second semester enrollment. So I just, I wanted to provide an update to the board today. We will circle back in the next couple of meetings with additional updates. There are some things that we know based on our planning so far and some other things that we're still working on. We do have a timeline for communication, so I will speak to that in just a moment. But before I get there, I wanted to talk about some of the things that we had to talk through first before we even started to talk through our timeline. So, so first of all, we had a lot of questions among our team about class assignments. We recognize that a change in teacher or in teacher team is very likely if a student is going to move from one program to the other. So if a student or a family chooses to move from the remote program to the in-person program or vice versa, it's almost certain that you will have a change in teacher and a change in classroom assignments. If a, a family is staying in whichever program that they identified for themselves, we very much want to maintain those class assignments to the greatest extent possible, but I, I, we want to be really clear that it is not a certain, a certainty that you will maintain your same class assignment. And so we just really want to be upfront with our families about that right from the start. A change in teacher or teacher team may occur, even if a student does not change their enrollment section. And there's a variety of reasons for this. But if you can kind of help us think through or think through with us, if there are a number of students who change programs from one to the other, we may need to reassign to balance out class size. So if there's a large number of students who move from remote to in-person or from in-person to remote, we know that those class sizes in both programs right now are pretty well at their limit. And so there are some places where we can accommodate a couple of students moving, there are other places where we simply can't. And so we wanna be really clear that just choosing to keep your same program doesn't ensure that you will keep your same teacher. Our goal is to minimize those changes as much as possible. However, with the enrollment commitment changes, we may need to make some adjustments. And so we just really wanna be clear about that. We're going to do our best to communicate clearly to all parents about that, but we also understand that some people have their expectations and that will be disappointing, even if we try our best to communicate that ahead of time. Class assignments and those reassignments will be based on enrollment numbers. Individual requests cannot be honored. So sometimes at the beginning of the year, we get requests for friends or certain teachers or, at this point, it is going to be a monumental task to just allow and, and remain committed to allowing every family their personal choice. We won't be able to make class assignment requests happen for our families. And so we appreciate everyone's understanding of that. We spent a lot of time talking about school assignments. And here in particular, we're really talking mostly about a remote student who might want to return to in-person instruction. We spent some time talking about, do they, do they go back to their homeschool or do we place them where there is a spot available so that we don't have to resection what the remote or the in-person? And at this point, after a lot of discussion among our administrative team, we do feel that homeschool assignment is a priority. So this really relates to our elementary students. While we can't guarantee it until all the enrollment commitments are finalized, that really is a priority for us, and we want to honor our remote students and their commitments by making sure that they have the opportunity to return to their homeschool. So to the greatest extent possible, that will be happening as well. And then you can imagine, if five students come back from remote to, say, join a certain grade level at central school, one grade level might be able to accommodate them without reassigning some of the students, but another grade level may not be able to do that. And so, so we may need to then hire or reassign some, some teachers to accommodate that and open another section. We don't want to open that other section with only five students, right? So then, then we'll be doing some, some reassignments of students. Similarly, within our remote learning program, we do expect, based on our survey feedback so far, that we may have a few more students moving from remote to in-person than the other direction. We're hopeful that will help to address some of those class size concerns that we've heard a little bit about. But if too many move in one direction, then we may need to look at, how are we staffing all of those different programs? The one commitment that remains true and we will not veer from is everyone has the opportunity to make the choice at semester break. So we will not say to a family, I'm sorry, but you chose this first semester, so you can't make a move for second semester. We were really clear about that at the beginning, and so we want to remain really clear about that at this point. I see a couple of hands up, so I will pause before moving on.
Got a remind, if you wouldn't mind reminding me the percentage of what we are right now? Is it seventy, seventy, thirty or something like that?
It's about eighty, twenty.
That was it? Okay.
Eighty percent of families in the in-person program, twenty percent in the fully remote program. And similarly, we have teachers assigned to those two programs separately.
Yeah, right. Right.
So something just to keep in mind.
I'm also just thinking about space. Are you worried? I mean, I will cross that bridge when we get to it and we know the numbers, but if that happens, that more moves in person, can we accommodate that?
Yeah, so you'll remember that over the summer, when we were doing our planning, one of our firm commitments right from the start was if everyone were to choose in-person, we wanted to make sure we had a model that would allow all to make that choice. And so that model includes some really flexible use of space. So possibly using our cafeteria space or our gym space, converting some spaces into some classroom spaces. We remain committed to that. And so right now, we haven't had to convert too many spaces in order to accommodate our in-person learners right now. If we see a big shift for second semester, and yet the ISB and IDPH guidance remains the same with the six feet of distancing, it's, it's likely that we will need to use those creative spaces. We have our, our learning common spaces and some of those extra spaces that are available to do that as well. We currently also have some remote teachers teaching from onsite, and so those are some spaces too, that we have some ability to be a little more creative with. But we, we will not turn away a family from moving remote or from moving in-person. But again, this commitment will be a commitment for all of second semester, just like it was for all of first semester, and we won't be accommodating changes unless there are some really unique circumstances, some extenuating circumstances throughout second semester. So again, this is, this is a decision that families will really need to think through carefully as they, as they pursue that. So looking at some of the data that we received, again, we, we surveyed our parents. Katie has talked a little bit about that so far. From our remote parent survey, we found that about fifty-five percent of families said that they were very likely, actually, the wording was likely, to maintain their current commitment. There were about thirty-five percent of families, thirty-six percent of families that were unsure if they would maintain or want to make a switch. And about nine and a half percent said that they would be unlikely to maintain their commitment for, for second semester. So that means, it, it represents, on the survey feedback, thirty-five students indicated, their parents indicated that they would be unlikely to continue in the remote learning program and want to move back to the in-person program. Conversely, when we asked the same sort of question to our in-person parents, we had responses representing just over two thousand of our students, and ninety-five percent said that they would be likely to maintain their current enrollment. About four percent said that they were unsure, and about one percent said that they would be unlikely to maintain their in-person enrollment. So that equates to, based on just these direct survey feedback, about thirty-five students will be likely to move from the fully remote program to in-person, and about twenty students will move in the other direction. But then there's those unsure in between and those who maybe didn't get a chance to respond to the survey that we haven't yet captured. So based on these data, we do think that we'll be able to accommodate without too many changes. But again, in this environment, from day to day, from week to week, things change. And so we will honor whatever commitments parents make at the time that they submit those commitments.
By grade level and those statistics?
You know, I don't have that data. I'll ask Katie if you know off the top of your head.
No, not, I don't, I don't believe, nothing stood out as far as one being more disruptive over the other. It was pretty evenly split.
I do, it was. I do think it was a
I do, it was, I do think it was a little bit lower or a little bit higher at elementary level than at five-eight level. The, of, for the remote of people wanting to come back.
The remote, yeah. We, we did see, and there were a couple of grade levels, you'll remember, where we saw a, a bigger number of families choosing the fully remote program from the start. And so, that may then, it may have been like little bubbles choosing that. And now, some of them are choosing otherwise for second semester. So, we, we have room to accommodate some. If it grows too big in one direction or another, we'll need to look at our staffing and, and make some adjustments there to make sure that we balance those class sizes to the greatest extent possible. Ellen?
A breakdown, kind of a spike or whatever in, between the elementary schools? I'm curious.
We didn't see a dramatic difference between the schools themselves. Remember that Ramona had a much larger student population choose the fully, fully remote program? We didn't see a significant amount of those students saying that they wanted to come back necessarily.
Or other schools saying that they wanted to either go remote or?
Not, not a huge difference from school to school.
Okay.
So, I do want to talk a little bit about timing. So, we're giving the board an update today. We do have some administrative meetings this week that will help to finalize some of our communication and some of these plans. We have parent-teacher conferences at the end of this week. And then, we're hoping to finalize our, our letter and, and the enrollment forms and those kinds of things. We will be communicating with our staff on the afternoon of the thirteenth, giving them this information, probably a little bit more because we'll have things really finalized by that point. And then, holding some follow-up meetings on Monday of next week with our staff. Final preparations we'll share with the board on, at Monday's board meeting. And then, we expect with the board's approval that we will be sending communication out to our families on the seventeenth. So, that is Tuesday of next week. We'll be sending out some reminders. We do hope to host a Q and A webinar with our families on the twentieth at ten thirty. And then, we are asking that enrollment commitments be submitted back to us by Monday, November thirtieth. So, that gives everyone the Thanksgiving break to really contemplate what adjustments they want to make. We are very cognizant that right now with the surge that we're all experiencing, this will be a difficult decision for our families. Unfortunately, we can't push this back any further because what will end up happening is the need to adjust our staffing, class assignments, and everyone will want to know before they go into winter break what those assignments are, both teachers and students alike. And so, we're really going to do our best to use those three weeks between Thanksgiving and winter break to take these enrollment commitments and make sure that we have a plan for, before we go on to winter break, to the greatest extent possible. Not everything will be buttoned up, but that, that really is our hope. So, we will be able to review with the board, provided we receive those enrollment commitments back on Monday, November thirtieth. We plan to be able to review those preliminary enrollment projections at the Committee of the Whole Meeting in December. And then, the final enrollment projections in preliminary staffing, any adjustments that we may need to make, we'll be able to talk with the board about that at the December board meeting, which is December fourteenth. And then, we'll, we hope to be able to have preliminary assignments for staff communicated before they go to winter break. That is our plan. It is a lot of work to do. And I will again emphasize, we know that this is going to be a really tough decision for families to make, especially in light of what is happening throughout our community right now. We wish we could make it easier for them. The one thing that hopefully helps a little bit is that people have now had this lived experience with the fully remote program and with the in-person program. So, at least they know what they're choosing. It's the, those who are looking to make an adjustment, I think, that will be burdened the most by, do they make the change or do they not? Any feedback or questions about the timeline that we've proposed?
That's the, the general feedback that this has been like really, really good work on, on everybody's part. The number of moving things, the different points of view of, of everybody makes it really tough. And, and we appreciate the, the work that's gone into the successful program so far.
Lisa has a question.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to, um, express appreciation for the homeschool priority. I think that is important. I know it adds a level of complexity, but I think it'll be worth it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And I will again emphasize the trade-off, or that is, by allowing students to go back to their homeschool, there may be some reassignment of classes if, because it's obviously if we're, if we're assigning students throughout all the sections of the district, we have a little more flexibility. If we are prioritizing homeschool assignment, that means there may be a need to add a section or adjust a section here and there. And, and so, that, that may mean some disruption at semester break for, at a few grade levels at a couple of schools. And so, we, again, really weighed those pros and cons. And we think that it is, it is the right thing to do to ensure that our remote students can go back to their homeschool, even if it means some, some disruption of those classes and class assignments for second semester.
You have other thoughts before we move on to, to four and five?
Okay, I will move on then. Just a highlight for the board. We did with some feedback from the metrics team and some administrative review of options. We looked at November thirtieth, which is the Monday after Thanksgiving break, making that a remote learning planning day. Again, planning preemptively for that day, hopefully helps everyone to plan for what that week looks like. We expect that our staff will be doing some planning, a little bit of training that day as well. Remember that the state has afforded every district five days to use for that purpose. We used some at the beginning of the year. This, I believe, is our fourth. So, we have one more that we'll plan to use at some point during this school year. But at this point, this seemed like a really good opportunity to give our teachers some additional planning time, ensure that they had a real break over Thanksgiving, and then also the opportunity for us to reassess as we're coming back from this break. So, at, at, at some point in the future, the board will officially approve some of these calendar adjustments. But that, at this point, has been communicated out to our families and staff, and I think it will be a good use of the day. Which leads me to our metrics reopening advisory team update. I will try to provide the very best update I can in a succinct way. Our conversations at the reopening team advisory group have become more and more challenging in that simply is because the data has become more and more challenging. The decisions that we are faced with making at this point are, are really difficult decisions. We do see some diverging opinions regarding whether we should remain open in light of the regional community spread metrics. The team has found itself in a really difficult and somewhat tenuous position as they weigh the alarming community spread metrics in the region as welling the growing, as well as the growing new cases per one hundred thousand in the region with some of the more local data that we see in Willmet and in the township, which is a little more favorable. And, and, excuse me, what we're seeing in our schools, which is, we, we haven't seen evidence of within-school transmission, nor have we seen an uptick in our cases among our school population, students or staff. And so, we really are seeing that throughout our, our operations at this point. We've spent a ton of time at the early part of the school year to be as, as effective as we possibly could with our operations. And I think that much of that is paying off. And yet, we are really nervous as, as the community spread continues to uptick at an alarming rate that at some point, that will mean cases are, are moving into our schools from outside of our doors at a rate that is less manageable than we currently experience. So, the reality is that there are some very real risks of the virus throughout the region and increasing new cases locally within our schools. We continue to demonstrate our ability to mitigate risk and transmission. But at some point, we really are worried that, that it will no longer be safe. We acknowledge and the team acknowledge that schools are one of the safest places for people to be right now. And that really is because of the structure that we've put in place and the mitigation procedures. There isn't another place throughout our community right now that is as controlled and mitigated as our schools are. And yet, we recognize that our schools are a reflection of our community. And so, if there's big community spread, there are likely to be some cases coming in, even if we're able to limit the transmission that's happening within our schools. So, at this point, if we are to keep our schools open, we must act now to ensure that we can continue to do so safely. And so, the team, after much discussion, identified several critical areas for action for next week. I'll talk through these a little bit. But one is additional substitutes. We've been talking a lot about substitutes. Heather and our administrative team have been hiring substitutes. Our community has responded incredibly well to our request for additional substitute teachers, and that's been wonderful. But our process of requesting subs at the school level has been based on if there's an absence, you request a sub. In addition, we do have some on-staff people whose job it is to sub. And so, we preemptively hired some people for that role. But, but beyond those people who are on-staff, whose job it is to sub, we find an absence and then fill it. And what we're proposing at this point is filling the absence before we actually have it occur. So, that means we will be calling two or three subs every day at every school in addition to the on-staff subs that we already have available. So, that will mean we'll have staff available to assist before we, because we can expect that that assistance will be needed, right? What we're finding is that staff, sometimes at the last minute, develop symptoms just like our students do, and they can't self-certify. And so, they need to stay home. And we need to be able to staff for that. We also recognize that sometimes staff have family members. And as soon as there's a household member who is, has symptoms or is under evaluation, the whole house has to quarantine until they can return. And so, excuse me, the addition of these substitutes preemptively, we don't think will grow our budget drastically because ultimately, these are, these are positions that need to be filled either way. We're just trying to be as proactive as we can in, in staffing. And so, Heather will be working with a very small team to identify the best way to do this. But our principals already have some ideas around this. And so, that is one of the things that we absolutely, and actually, we must take right away. And unless the board tells me I can't, we're going to pursue that right away.
Yeah. I, I mean, I have maybe a question, comment. So, I think, you know, especially as we get into this kind of holiday part of the year, I would suggest that, that there might be some more flexibility out there among the parents. And just, maybe it's like lack of knowledge. I'm speaking from my personal ignorance. Like, I, I don't know what being a sub would involve. I assume I'm maybe qualified for it. I don't know.
Probably qualified, but not yet licensed.
Well, definitely not, none of the above. And, and I think one of my issues, and I assume it's an issue for others, would be like, I cannot be paid, like, at all. Would not want to be. And is that an issue for us to have a volunteer? I assume it's an issue. Okay.
Yeah, a sub needs to be an employee of the district.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Well, that's a bummer. So, I'm just.
But what we could use some help with is after-school and before-school, parents on the playground and around school reminding others to mask up and maintain distance before and after school throughout our community. There are other things people really can do that will help us, even if it's not inside of our schools. Thank you for asking that question. So, to, to be, to be a substitute, you need to go through our human resources department. You do need to have a license, but that is an application that the human resources department can help anyone who is eligible to apply for. We have substitute positions both for our certificated staff, which would require a bachelor's degree, and for our paraprofessional staff, which requires an associate's degree or, or something similar.
What I'm saying, you might want to consider, if you haven't done it, like an open presentation to parents about what it takes and what the expectation would be. If you haven't done that yet, I know, I know you need more work.
We've been communicating as broadly as we can, but something that maybe a, a quick video or something like that.
Yeah, right.
Thank you. So, that's one step we want to take right away. And we expect that that preemptive calling of substitutes would go through up to winter break if, in fact, we're able to continue to remain open for in-person instruction. A second is a closer review of our internal operations to continue to evaluate the safety of keeping our schools open for in-person instruction. Our, our teams are feeling really confident in the work that we're doing and the evidence of not seeing transmission happening within school and being able to really successfully identify and isolate cases. It seems to be evidence that what we're doing is working, but there's always room for improvement. And so, we spent at the beginning of the school year, a lot of time surveying our staff. We then shifted to it being reported by our principals because we felt like that was a little too much information to be asking as we're just maintaining our operations. We're now going to be shifting back to asking for some additional feedback. We've looked at lunch in particular because that was a, a worry. And at this point, we don't see cause for concern at lunchtime. However, we recognize that everyone is a little worried about lunchtime. And so, there's some things that we want to do to just further ensure that students remain six feet apart while they are sitting for lunch. They have their desk shields up. Our staff who are supervising should be wearing their face shields. Up till now, that has been optional, and we think that that's just an additional protective layer. And then, we're also, because we're discouraging students from talking at lunchtime, we tend not to. I personally tend to discourage showing of movies at school. But lunchtime at this point, if we're going to be discouraging talking, might be a time where we allow for some educational videos to be put on just for that portion when they're eating. Again, once we're finished eating, masks go up, desk shields go down. We might be able to be a little more flexible and certainly don't want to diminish the recess time that is available too. So, those are some things operationally we'll be looking at. The other area that we feel like we need to really continue to pursue is options for testing. The board might remember that we have made PCR testing available to all of our staff to ensure that they have access. Certainly, they have access through their doctor and through other clinical sites. But what we were finding is a, a day or two and sometimes four days lag time on finding a site and then getting results. And so, we partnered with Ambry to ensure that all staff have access to testing quickly and can pursue that PCR testing if they have symptoms or have been exposed. That's really been helpful to us. We've averaged about eleven or twelve tests a week for staff. And the, the response time has been really, really great. And I think our staff have benefited from that. And so, there's two areas that we want to expand in terms of testing. One is to household members of our staff. What we're finding again is where staff need to stay home while their household members are seeking testing and awaiting results. And so, we think while there's a little bit of a cost to it, expanding that access to their household members will assist us in, in reducing the time that staff who are not ill and who don't have ill household members can really return back to work more quickly. And so, provided the board is, is willing to support that, I would like to pursue that as well. Again, not mandatory, but an additional option for testing. And then, in terms of testing, we are closely monitoring what some other districts are doing for screening. And we have three options that we're looking at for our students. And again, this is really dependent upon if we can continue to remain open for in-person instruction. Would a screening element of testing allow us to ensure that or, or better protect our, our systems from the asymptomatic individual entering? And so, we have a small team of medical professionals and our school nurses who will be looking at some options. One is BiNextNow, which is, I, I believe federally funded testing program. Schools are eligible to apply. We have applied. And we've heard back from the Illinois Department of Public Health that we may be eligible. And this would be rapid testing that we could administer ourselves. The benefits are that we can administer it ourselves. The downfall is that we aren't guaranteed that we will actually have access to these testing resources. And it is a nasal swab. And so, that is pretty resource-intensive in terms of our nurses who are already quite burdened. And so, whether in our community, that's truly an advantage. I think what we're seeing is people have pretty ready access to rapid tests if they want to go and seek it. So, we're not sure that that would be really helpful. But we're also monitoring what NutriR is doing through their testing and are going. also monitoring what Nutriere is doing through their testing and are going to be further exploring that to, to see if something like the saliva-based testing, which is rapid testing screening, might be something we want to pursue in the upcoming weeks. It would not be ready by next week, but possibly at some point in those weeks between Thanksgiving and winter break or after winter break, as we're coming back from that two-week break time. So those are some things that we're looking at. And then the third option would be taking our.
About Nutriere. So is there, so I mean, just, you know, I would assume that many District 39 parents have kids in Nutriere and kids in this district. What are the boundaries here as far as information sharing? So let's say, like, one of my, like, say my son gets tested and he's positive, would that feedback come back to our district? They have another two kids, right, in this district? Or what kind of communication is there?
So what I will share is, we, as superintendents, talk multiple times a day, often.
Right.
And so we're aware of the cases that are happening from district to district. What I can't do without permission of you is share with a neighboring district that your child has tested positive.
Oh, sure. So that would be the protocol?
But, right. But what will happen if, say, you have a child who's at Nutriere, and they test positive through their screening mechanism, all members of the household should quarantine while that individual is being evaluated through a PCR test. And so that notice should come pretty quickly, because those tests come really quickly. It is dependent upon, completely reliant upon people being honest and adhering to those quarantine orders. As soon as a household member tests positive, even through a rapid test, as soon as they're being evaluated, really, they should be isolating at home, all household members, until, until that PCR test comes back. But we are really closely monitoring what Nutriere is doing. I had the opportunity to sit in on the presentations that Dr. Campbell made to the team at Nutriere, and so I've learned quite a bit about that already, and had the opportunity to talk to the school nurse of another elementary district out in the Western suburbs that is pursuing that option as well, and to learn a little bit from their experience. So it may be something that we want to bring in to our district. I will tell you, it is very costly. If we were to do every student every week, that would range about $30,000 a week for our district. It, it's an expense that, it's, it's pricey, right? And, and then we're having to kind of navigate the false positives and the false negatives. So it really, we hope to learn very much from what Nutriere does before we pursue that. And so far, we've had really good experience with our families adhering to the symptom check that, that we do every day. And so if someone is symptomatic, they stay home. They have to provide a PCR test before they can return to school, or an alternate medical diagnosis from a physician. I'll talk about that in just a second. Amy, I saw your hand go up.
I don't know if this is feasible. It's, I'm just wondering if there's a way to ask, if that is the route that we think would make the most sense and would be safest, but it's so costly, if, that you could ask families if they're willing to help support it financially, but not require it. I know many people have said to me, we'd be happy, you know, you wouldn't want to require that, but if there's a way to offset that somehow.
Yeah.
I know there's a lot of support for that.
Thank you. I think that's one of the options that we, quite frankly, will need to consider. We have invested a lot in the mitigation procedures that we already have in place, and in the staffing that we have in place that have allowed us to open and remain open. So at this point, I think if we were to go that screening route, I think we would be asking for, at the point of signing up, some contribution to that. And so for a family, if, if, let's imagine they're going to sign up for a six-week program of saliva testing, it's, the test costs about $11 each, each time. So that would be $66 for a six-week screening program. Yeah. So that, that is something that we'd be looking at. And then we have our Angel Fund that could offset it for those who either can't, can't afford it, who can't afford it for whatever reason. We wouldn't be man, mandating that testing. That would be an optional program for our students. We also would then make it available to our staff. So again, these are some options that we'll be evaluating with a small group. Actually, we have a late-night meeting tonight to, to talk about this, this option. Yes, John?
Great, Matt. So is it, is the 30,000, does that include the staff?
If, if we were to do everyone every week.
Yeah.
And, and some of our medical, some of our experts have said that it would be, it may be useful to do our staff. It may be less useful to do students every week. And so those are some of the things that we'll have to weigh. But some families may just want to do it every week if we have it available. So, yeah. So then the third area of testing that we'll be looking at is the PCR testing through Ambry that we've made available to staff. I've been in conversations with the Ambry team to see if we could make that PCR testing available to students. Again, this would be a cost to our families. But what we've found so often is that families are struggling at times when they have symptoms to find PCR testing that, that is available and that can give them results quickly enough. Often, families find that they have to make an appointment, or their insurance will say you have to have symptoms for four days before you can test. Well, that ends up being an extended amount of time and quite a frustration for our families. And so there are some avenues we can take to make Ambry testing, the PCR testing available to our families. So again, this is something that we want to consider. Talked through it a little bit with our nurses, and they think, from what they're seeing on the ground, this could be incredibly helpful, quite frankly, more helpful than some of the screening options that we've discussed. So those are, those are the testing options that we'll be looking at. It will not be available next week, but we, we are really acting swiftly to take this action to explore what could be available more quickly. And then finally, we're doing some, the Cook County Department of Public Health just initiated weekly meetings with local superintendents, and so I'll be joining those. Our first one was on Friday. It was less informative than I was hoping it would be. But hopefully, as we move forward, we'll, we'll find it to be more useful. The other actions that we need to continue to take is just reminding everyone of healthy habits, not only at our school, but John, as I mentioned, outside of our schools. We see time and time again, when kids are in school, they're compliant with mask-wearing, compliant with social distancing, really doing a great job, and they walk outside of our building. And it, it feels to many like those rules only apply in school. And the reality is, we are seeing cases transmit outside of school, at social activities, at sporting events, at small gatherings, even gatherings outside, where people think that they're safe, unless you're maintaining a six, six feet distance. There really isn't a place that is safe from, from transmission. So again, that's, this leads many to believe that schools are one of the safest places to be. And yet, if we want to continue to remain open for in-person instruction, we need the entire community to be contributing to that effort. Another action we took, based on feedback from the metrics team and administratively really reviewing options, is this Thursday and Friday during conferences, we will be allowing our staff the option to work from home. Those camp conferences would have been remote anyways, so it just gives them a little bit of additional safety. As they're conducting those conferences, they'll be able to be unmasked as they're on their Zooms. And so it is, it is just an option for them. But so that families know, there will be some teachers who will be conferencing from home and others who will be conferencing from school. It will follow the same schedule, just an additional allowance. So that kind of gives an update of the actions we need to take immediately. I, I again, want to emphasize that I think for everyone, it feels very much like our goalposts continue to move. We started off the year really talking a lot about operational metrics. While our community spread metrics were really low, we focused a lot on operations, and that served us really well. Took a lot of effort from everyone, but we got to the place that we were feeling really good about, about where we were. Then our, we started to see community spread metrics start to pop up. And what we were told back in August is that when we get to a positivity rate of 8%, the governor will likely move us back to Phase Three and direct schools and other businesses to close. That has not happened. We've reached that 8%, and yet mitigation procedures have been put in play. It has not directed school closures. In fact, we're seeing more and more schools open. And I think that is partially due to the fact that we are, through experience, learning that schools are not spreading locations for, for the disease, provided you're following mitigation procedures, providing you're staying six feet apart and wearing your mask and, and doing all of those, implementing all of those protocols that help to keep us safe. Right now, the governor is not ordering school closures. Right now, the Cook County Department of Public Health does not recommend school closures. I'm not sure how long that will continue to be the case. There is some talk about Thanksgiving to winter break, the, the Cook County Department changing their perspective on that. But right now, they are not recommending school closures. So kind of in summary, we will be working on those steps I identified above to provide some immediate relief and some additional mitigation. We remain committed to and prepared for a pivot to remote instruction if needed. So while the metrics team did not get consensus around recommending a pivot for next week, they will continue to talk about that. And in the interim, it may be a move that we need to make if operationally, we can't staff our programs safely. And so again, while we're doing everything we can, we are prepared to pivot. And I just, I need to tell everyone, our community at large, that if we need to make this move and, and pivot, it will not be for lack of effort on anyone's part. Our staff are working tirelessly. Our teachers are working tirelessly. Our administrators are all working above and beyond to try and continue to provide a really enriching remote program and in-person program. So this Friday, the team will be discussing the subcommittee work that has been identified through each of these action steps. Keep in mind, the team is typically meeting on a Friday to recommend adjustments for the subsequent week, so 10 days out. So this Friday, November 13th, we would be talking about adjustments for 10 days out, which would have been November 23rd. Thankfully, we already have a little bit of reprieve that week, because that's a holiday week for us. Therefore, we will be looking at making a decision on Friday, November 20th that could affect November 30th, which is that week after Thanksgiving. We know that Monday will be a non-attendance day. Students are set to return to school on Tuesday, December 1st, in whatever means are deemed appropriate at that point. We hope to make a decision on the 20th, or have, have some consensus around that. If not, we likely will have a meeting over the week of holiday in order to look again at the metrics. Again, we want our schools to remain open as long as we can do so safely. So the mitigation structures and procedures we have in place at our schools help to make them some of the safest places to be throughout our community. But that said, there are some very real risks, and we recognize that we haven't seen increases in cases yet at our schools, but at some point, we may. Every additional case in our schools increases the potential risk of exposure as well as the risk of quarantine, both of which everyone wants to avoid. No one wants to be quarantined. No one wants to be exposed. Add to that, the fatigue that we know our families are feeling about keeping kids home when they have symptoms and, and trying to pursue those, that PCR testing. We recognize that sometimes that adds some additional pressure. Our staff are incredibly pressured to continue to come to work. They're being really diligent about symptom screening and staying home if they're experiencing symptoms. But all of this raises the concern that sick individuals could enter our schools. And then you add to that the anticipated travel that will be happening over the next couple of weeks, and what that brings to just kind of the, the unstructured socialization time and exposure that happens for all of us. And so we must have families and staff continue to be honest about travel, honest about exposure, and honest about symptoms as we move forward. I think that pretty well summarizes where we're at. I appreciate the board's support for preemptive substitute ordering. I appreciate the board's support for expanding PCR testing access for household members of our staff. I think that will be a, an additional benefit that will help keep our schools open, and will be appreciated by our staff. And then I also appreciate the board's support for exploring testing for our students and what options make the most sense in light of the kinds of structures that we already have in place. Happy to answer any other questions. I realize that was exceptionally long, but there's a lot going on in that regard.
Questions, Frank?
I just had a quick summary, and again, to, to thank, be thankful for all the work that's gone in and the success of that work so far. When, when we have these, these weekly meetings, what I see is there's two tails. One is the external environment, the numbers that you see in public, and they're all over the board in terms of different places have different numbers, but they're basically trending up versus the numbers in our school. And the most important one for, in our school, there's been no identified cases of someone getting COVID from someone else while in school. And that sometimes gets lost, but that's really important. The, the other one that's also important is that, and I always look at page 15 if you're not going to memorize the entire packet, because that, that shows that we've been doing a, a very steady job on a week-by-week basis of controlling and identifying cases inside the school. I mean, it's been basically flat, that four to five incidences a week. And again, if you think about that's flat while the, the caseloads are going up like this, that shows that there's a disconnect, that what's going on in the school is being done well, and relatively disconnected from the external environment. So as long as that's maintained, I think, again, it illustrates we're doing a good job, but it also illustrates that we're protecting our kids and our teachers.
Other thoughts, comments?
I do, Mark.
Yeah, go Lisa.
Um, so I want to echo what Frank said, and also thank the staff and Mark and Frank for representing the board. I just want to get a read on the board's direction here. It's my impression, and I'll tell you where I am, that we continue this commitment to stay open as long as is safe, that I'm really hearing, that the research says that right now, school is the safest place for kids, and that, you know, the fact that we haven't had documented in-school transmission is evidence of that. I really appreciate the teams looking into additional safety measures as a safeguard against the increasing community positivity rate. I think that the testing and the additional staff support testing is, is great. I think that proactive closure is not where I'd like to go. I'd like to use the data, continue to have that data be our guide. And in terms of the 8% Phase Three, I think when we historically, in this history of COVID, think that we're constantly learning about new things. And so kind of the lines that we drew and the decisions that we made back in March, April, May are different than the decisions we're making now. And so I just, I want us to kind of be flexible. And for me, the number, one of the most important metrics is kind of, are people transmitting COVID in our schools? And we just don't have evidence of that. And for that, I am grateful. So I'm, I'm wondering what other people think.
All right. I agree with you. Yeah, I, if you don't mind, I'll just add one or two things. So first of all, I totally agree with that. And I think, and I want to be clear that we're talking about in-person schooling. You know, when, when we, if we have to pivot, we will pivot to a program which we have already proven is quite effective as well, as evidenced by some of the numbers we heard earlier today, in terms of families wanting to switch between programs. So, but nonetheless, in-person has proven extremely important for those children who have chosen it. The other thing, though, that I want to acknowledge is, we have stayed in front of this, which is testament to, to the administration, to Carrie, and to the staff, and to the teachers, and to the students and the families. It's an incredible outcome, which I'm very happy about. That said, the risk is going up. And so what we have, and this is what I want to acknowledge, what we have is we have teachers and staff administrators who have done an incredible job and are continuing to do an incredible job. And we are asking them to continue to do an incredible job in a, in a. And we are asking them to continue to do an incredible job in a, in a situation that we know is getting riskier. And it's tough. It is tough. It's stressful. It is a difficult thing to do. And, you know, I think Lisa acknowledged it correctly, but I want to reiterate it. We know that metrics that we thought at the beginning of this thing were going to be the, well, you know, if that happens, we're going to have to really change the way we're thinking, we're thinking about this. Those metrics have gone into the red. They have. And what we're saying is we are taking action based on that. We're taking action by hiring new substitutes. We're taking action by looking at testing and then expanding the testing that we're, we, we want to provide. We're taking action by reminding families to please keep your kids at home if they're feeling sick at all. It's a really important message. So we are taking action based on those metrics. What we're not doing yet, because of the incredible effectiveness of what we've done so far, is recommending that we, that the action we take is go to fully remote program. And I think that's important. I don't, I don't, the, the last thing I will say about all of this, and Gary, Gary mentioned it before, my biggest learning is I have no idea what's going to come next. And anybody who says that they know what's going to come next, I don't believe them. So I am staying open to the fact that we may have to change all of this and we don't know which direction we may have to change in it. And so I guess my, my message there is I hope everybody will keep that open mind. I hope everybody will also, you know, be supportive when we have to change however it is that we have to change. And finally, I really hope that everybody in the community will understand that if you value the in-person learning that's going on, or even if you just value the health of the community, please, please, please keep practicing safe practices at home, including keeping your kids home if they're sick. It's a tough thing to do, but please do it, including, you know, all of the social distancing and, and safe practices outside the schools that we're at.
Here, here.
And I'll just add to what Mark said is in terms of the plan, and I, I'm pretty sure it was Frank Lloyd Wright that said, it's a quote about, about organic plans. Plans, this plan has to change because we don't know what the future is. And it is a great plan because of its ability to adapt and change, because every good plan has to do that. It has to have that ability to change with changes in, with changes in environment, with changes in circumstance as they arise. If you're completely, if you have a plan that's completely unable to do that and stuck in the moment, that's when things fall apart. So I applaud the metrics committee for allowing for the changes that are necessary and have been proven, like Mark said, and like everyone else, have been proven that they're, they're working and listening to experts and listening to what is going on outside of our little realm and being open to, to allowing for the changes that needed to happen, that need to happen to the advisory, to the plan in order to accommodate that. And so I, I applaud you. It's, it's a hard thing to do, but it's, it's the right thing to do and it, it's going in the right direction. I, and I agree 100% with what you're doing. And yeah, as long, and I think everyone has that, that goal in mind, as long as it's safe, as long as we keep everyone safe and healthy, I mean, that's, that's the goal. And so far, you're doing that. So kudos, thank you.
Well, so I second what, just the enormous appreciation and support of everything that you are putting in place and have done. My thought about preventatively going remote after the holidays is if the numbers deem that, or the governor or the Department of Health deem that that's required, absolutely. But if not, I worry just logically, we're going to face the issue of returning after potential travel at some point. So if we close between Thanksgiving and Christmas or the winter holidays because we're afraid of potential travel, we're only pushing that issue that we're going to return at some point and families will just potentially be traveling at that point. So I think it's a communication issue about our expectations. My understanding is that people are being quite honest and cancelling plans or planning accordingly. But I just want us to think about if we're making that decision, it, we have to face that issue either way.
Any other thoughts on this one before we?
Yeah, I guess I, I mean, I agree with everyone. I, I mean, I have a lot of confidence in the reopening task force. So I think whatever you guys recommend, we will support. I mean, it sounds like you're looking into testing, which I think is, is a really good idea. Love to hear more later on that.
And when, just as I mentioned for, for Carrie, I, I didn't see anybody with open-mouthed shock, maybe that's because we all have masks on, when, when Carrie said it could cost $30,000 a week. So I just want to make sure that people heard that number and, you know, have the opportunity to say that is completely unacceptable or gosh, that's too high. I mean, that, that's a preliminary number and we're not, you know, I don't want, yeah, anybody, but I think ballpark, we think that's at least pretty close.
If we were, if we were testing every student every week, that is what the cost would, would be about, every student and every staff member every week. And again, there are some who might recommend it, it doesn't need to happen every week. It could happen every other week. If we increase that frequency, obviously those costs go up. And so I think Amy's idea, and I think many of us share it, the idea of sharing some of those costs with those who want to access it, I think makes a lot of sense, knowing that where we have already invested our dollars to open in the first place has benefited really everyone. And so at this point, I, I think that is something that hopefully if people are interested in it, they would be willing to contribute for their own participation. Outside of our staff, of course, that would be something we would want to cover.
So I just wanted to make sure that we had that opportunity to sort of say that we are obviously not at the point of making that decision yet, but I really appreciate the preliminary information. Anything else on this topic before we get out of the strategy items? All right, I will turn it back over to Lisa. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to check, we've got old business, which includes a discussion of IASB, new business and public comment. Do people need another five-minute break or do we push on? I can't see or read the room. Can somebody? Push on? Okay, then let's, I'm going to turn it over to Amy for ongoing equity work.
So just a brief update, which is that we will be working with Dr. Logan to do an open meeting in some format, as, as I have spoken with our IASB representative. And that is her recommendation. So that will be scheduled and discussed and we'll be in communication of what form that looks like. It may be that it's more informative rather than a book discussion in that format.
But you'll give us all some time, some heads up, so we can start reading if we have?
Absolutely. It is not imminent, but that is the direction that we're going to be going.
In an open meeting or?
It does need to be an open meeting. Yeah. So that will, so then we will plan the structure of that accordingly. Productive and it may be that it's more informational at us, given that structure. It is not a possibility for it to be.
Yeah, we, we should talk about what it looks like before we commit to it. Because if, if by being an open meeting, it doesn't involve discussion or, you know, feedback or whatever, then there may be no point to having it.
Yes, I would disagree in that it would be potentially educational and the experience of reading the book, I hope, will be informative for all of us.
Yeah, changes like what we were thinking of.
Yes.
So I have, I have to really think about it, but I'm, I'm really glad that you're doing it. And actually, are you, are you coordinating it, Amy, then?
So Mark and I had worked with Dr. Logan together over the summer and will reconvene with, you know, what that format will be, but we're very cognizant of the different formats and what that means for open discussion.
I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's useful worth doing, I think. And I, I think I would like to think through my own questions and agendas and, you know, what, what, or agenda suggestions, right? And what, what might be worth a presentation, you know, covering.
So please, I guess what I would say is send me your thoughts. We will not commit to anything without following up with the board. I do feel strongly that we continue the work.
Yeah.
And he has had experience with both formats. So we'll have, I think, some suggestions about what's productive and appropriate. But do share your thoughts with me. I will not commit to anything before we all touch base.
And I just want to challenge the board here. Like it may not be the original format that we thought of, but it's important work, it's an important discussion and we can come up with a format that we can all work with, but we should keep this on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, just sorry to react. I mean, it's, I was kind of excited about the, the meeting and the book discussion, but I, this is, I think now I'm really thinking that makes more sense for a public body to pursue. It's not like you can't have your own book discussion.
And it will be a shared experience of having read the book.
Yeah.
The common set of ideas.
All right.
So.
I think it will be valuable whichever way we pursue it. I understand the somewhat disappointment that it, it might look a little bit different than what you had originally envisioned. And yet I think it's really powerful work and, and certainly could continue through conversations as the board pursues self-evaluation down the road, which is also important work typically happening with an executive session.
Okay, any other thoughts on this before we go on to IASB? Okay, great. So I'm going to turn it over to Ellen. She has recommended that we rethink some of our positions and last night sent out some background reading material. So Ellen, do you want to just briefly go through each of the changes you'd like to see and then we can kind of just decide whether we're going to modify our positions?
Clear my screen, but it's not working very well. That is? Okay, good. Again, about the lateness of that, but I want to. And hopefully we can go through most of these. I, I wanted to recap just to make sure that I was on, that when I, you know, go to the delegate assembly that I have summarized our thoughts. And I've already spoken up on the major points at the meetings, the pre-meetings, because it's a very different format this year than it has been in the past. Pardon me. However, I just wanted to recap. So I don't know if you've had a chance to read through. We don't have to go through every single one of these. Number one. I don't think we made, I didn't, there was no change to what, what I was suggesting or what you suggested. And I just, if there's any comments about what I wrote as a summary, that you can let me know. So I guess I'll just take kind of a look through the room and see, everyone good? Okay, number two as well. If there was any, anything you wanted me to add or take away or, I already spoke very strongly about our opinion on this resolution in the meeting. And as did, by the way, a lot of other districts. Many, many districts felt that this was not overreaching, that this was not impinging on anyone's personal rights, that ISB already has tons and tons of policies and resolutions that are in this quote unquote gray area of, you know, this, this definitely affects our schools.
Ellen, can I just suggest that you just go through the ones you want us to consider changing instead of all of them?
Okay. So number four is the big one, is a big one. It's, and it's a little unusual to, we originally said that we would support the amended language of this one. And I'm just suggesting that we support it, that we support opposing ISB's recommended. Wait, let's see, because it always gets confusing. So I'm just going to read it. First of all, the ISB, as they wrote it, as they presented it, they, they got the title of it wrong and then they never told the ISB membership that it was wrong, which I thought was very misleading. So it's called, it's supposed to be called pre-service teacher licensure, which is a really big jump from a pre-K teacher licensure. And we were voting to oppose ISB's recommendation to not adopt, but we were only, we were only voting to oppose by supporting the amended language. And I recommend that we first try to oppose by recommending that we support the resolution as it was originally written. And then if that doesn't work, then, then, then oppose by supporting the amended. And, you know, there's a good chance because this was not discussed and because ISB didn't clarify or send out the supporting materials that were requested, that I attached with it, I don't know if any of you guys got to look through it, that it, it's not going to pass this time, but I think out of principle, this is not asking districts to spend more money on hiring teachers. It's in principle, asking the state of Illinois to get their act together and catch up with the times that all, many, many, most other states have already done with their universities, at the university and college level, which is to, to require curriculum updates for the education of teachers. And they're not requiring at the moment that teachers, that, that, that colleges and universities require teachers to take scientifically proven methods of literacy education, like at least a class in it. There, so there are still teachers that aren't taking, you know, classes in, you know, phonics and phonemic awareness, spelling, decoding, those things that are crucial to.
Is it also that they are not just required to take the test, but to pass the new, to take a class, but to also pass an additional test?
It, it's, I mean, they're not even, they're not even required to take the basic, the basics of like, the, the basic coursework to learn, you know, how to teach literacy, scientifically proven techniques to teach literacy. So as a result, our students aren't literate. I mean, as a whole, in the state of Illinois, the literacy rates are, are just ridiculously low. And she cites all the statistics, you know, the district site that, that proposed this. They, they showed the literacy rates, that the 34% of Illinois fourth graders and 35% of Illinois eighth graders taking the test, they scored at proficient or above for their grade level. That's ridiculous. And it's because teachers that learned, that were certified through the state of Illinois, through the colleges and universities in the state of Illinois, as teachers weren't taught, you know, weren't taught the basic, these basic courses. They're, they're, I guess in the eighties, I, I had a long conversation with the person who submitted this and, and. And, and based on all of the information, those videos and everything that she provided. She's the expert on this, I'm not, but I mean, I'm summarizing as best I can. But there were, there is courses that were introduced in the eighties that were fat. They were basically more fads than anything. And they've, eighties and nineties, they've been debunked. It doesn't work. And so there are a lot of teachers that are still using those methods around. And I'm not saying that we are per se. Go ahead. Yeah.
Finish your thought.
Okay, I'm not saying that, you know, that our teachers are per se or, but I'm saying that in the state of Illinois, there are a lot of teachers that still are. There are older teachers that still are there, you know, they learned this. This is, it's not their fault, but this is what was taught. So it's time, what, what they're saying is it's time to kick the universities and colleges in the rear end to tell the state that this needs to change and they need to up their ante. And that's basically what this is asking. It's not, it's not telling districts to spend money on hiring teachers. It's just saying to change the curriculum at the higher level so that it trickles down when the teachers come to our districts, that they're educated in the right way to teach our children.
So I just want to clarify. We initially voted to, to support the language, which is to say, to oppose opposing it in our, great way of putting this, for the amended language. So I was under the impression that time that only the amended language would come up, but it sounds like first they will have a vote on the unamended language and then they'll have a vote on. So I just want to make sure that our task here is clear.
Right.
It sounds like we have two things we could do. One is we could decide to also support the original language, oppose, oppose that. And then if we want to, but this is up to everybody else, we can adjust our decision. We could open up for re, you know, for discussion about the, the part that we already decided, if we choose to. Okay, so that's where we are.
And what I would recommend is, is either way, like, it'll come down to, I'm sure, going to the amended, I'm guessing, but is to oppose, oppose both, just out of principle. Like, the, the original was written very and presented very well. But the committee was, was against both for reasons that I, I, it really did not make sense to me once I understood the resolution, once I had all the information and the title of the resolution and, and actually went through it and said, okay, this actually is not asking very much.
Given the work that you've done and sent out, and thank you for that, should we just take a quick sort of straw poll of whether we need to discuss this more?
Yeah, that's a great, and Frank had one question.
Yeah. We had a discussion, the words in the, the issue that ISB had was that the original proposal had the word mandate. So that, that is different than, you know, this is just the right thing to do and has no implications on other people. Mandate means things change. And what we talked about was the implication on school districts, availability of teachers, availability to fund teachers with the amended proposal from ISB, ISB, I, I guess, whatever.
ISB.
ISB. It moved in the direction, if you kept the word mandate, it forces school districts to do something that they may not be able to afford to do or. So there is a difference. I don't think it's a difference, it's a difference without distinction. I think there is a difference and that was why we and ISB had proposed amended work.
Right, but what I'm telling you is that the word mandate, in, in terms of the way, the intent of this, and when you change the title of it, there, it's referring to mandating that universities and colleges change their curriculum, not districts, individual districts and schools at the, at our level or high school level. This is not talking about high schools and elementary schools. This is talking about higher level education and the state. And actually, and, and.
In order to be certified. So, so a school district wouldn't be able to hire a certified teacher unless they had had this. I mean, it does, the wording, the title may have been misleading, but the first paragraph used the right term. The first paragraph did say service, it didn't say pre-K. So yes, the title may have been misleading, but the text of the document that ISB ruled on was not misleading.
Right, and I actually, I would say I agree with the word mandate, given, given what I know now about what the purpose of this is, that, that this is a proposal to mandate at a higher level education, that teachers at the highest level, that per licensure, that, that this, that curriculum for literacy course, that literacy be a mandate per, per teacher seeking licensure.
So I also just want to remind people, kind of, this is just saying the ISB should take a position or not take a position in terms of lobbying and advocacy, not that this becomes rule or regulation. So I just, I, I just want to be mindful of the time and think, but Ellen, how many, how many of these are you recommending changes on? Just so we can gauge how long we're going to be discussing.
Not.
How many? I'm sorry?
I said, not many. This was the biggest.
Okay.
Two, really.
So I think I was someone who was holding back on this. And as I recall, the conversation was not so much about what it required for districts, but the teacher shortage in general and the testing requirements for teachers. I, I remain open to changing my position from the other day. I, it, obviously, I want our students to be able to read. I want us to use scientifically proven instruction. I think it is, there's a lot that goes into why that may not be happening. But I am open to shifting my opinion.
Why don't we take a, a rough gauge at the moment? And, you know, it, it's not the end of, you know, this will come up again. I guarantee this is going to come up again, so.
It just occurred to me, I mean, I, I, I think I know where they're going with this and I respect the fact that this district is actually taking a stand on this issue, which is, I think, most of us find compelling, right? Like, reading, writing, you know, that kind of thing is really, really important. So I would, I'd be inclined to support where I think this is headed, although it is somewhat confusing and it's.
I think they could present it better.
Presentation.
And I think they, they got a little cut off by ISB. I think there's a bunch of things at play here, so I don't disagree.
Yeah, it is what it is, right?
It is what it is.
Try again. Are they going to put it up again?
I'm sure they'll try again, for sure. So, you know, based, I agree with you. And based on that, you know, my feeling is I, I want to support them, even though I have a feeling it's just not, you know, they'll try again. So, but it's, you know, I'm willing to take a, a kind of gauge right now of thumbs up or thumbs down on, on, let's say on the first part.
Let's just go all the way.
Let's just go on both.
Yeah.
Okay, is everyone okay with both?
That's good.
I, I'm, I'm good with oppose opposing.
Oppose opposing both.
Double oppose.
Okay, so Frankie's now, and then Aaron?
Yes.
Oppose both.
Can't hear you.
I'm fine with oppose, oppose. I was like Amy before. I think we were persuaded by the competing interest of the teacher shortage. I'm persuaded that this is a stronger competing interest. I'm disturbed by the notion that fixing the, there's more going into the lack of proficiency than just the teacher credentials is all I'll say, without getting into that can of worms.
So where are you now? Thumbs down?
Oppose, oppose.
Oppose, oppose, okay, and Lisa?
Oppose, oppose.
Okay, so we're there. Then we'll vote to oppose. Okay. So moving on.
Hey, Heather, that was a voca, right, that did this?
Yes, that was a voca.
All right.
So five, six, we're good. Oh, seven. So seven, this hopefully could be really quick. But I, I recommend that we should reconsider. And it's just because this was super confusing, the way they, that they phrased this. Both seven and eight go together, honestly. We voted, we were voting to oppose ISB's recommended, recommendation to adopt. And the reason I thought we could, we should reconsider is that this, this resolution was written before the current changes to state policy in regard to regional control. And ultimate control, like total shutdown of schools and everything, is still, you know, at the federal and state level. And, and, you know, ISB and the CDC, everyone still has control over, over saying, you know, scientifically, like what happens and all that. But the, so the state still has control over regional, like saying regionally whether it's okay or not. But the, but then when it gets down to the micro level of schools, it, all, this already exists. Regional, there is regional control right now and it's actually working. This is, I, I was listening to a lot of people talk and everyone agreed that people, the regions are handling this really well. And because of that, I, I kind of, I was swayed to support ISB's recommendation to adopt this. It didn't seem like this Wild West thing of like, everyone's going to just decide for their own, their, their own scientific, you know, experiments. But, and I think that's what we were all thinking when this, when we read this. I remember what the conversation was. So general thoughts based on that? If you want to stick with what our original vote was, or if you think otherwise?
Our original vote was?
Was to oppose it. And I think we should actually support this because it already exists.
Yeah, and we got to, Ken, well, we didn't, we didn't all agree on this one, my recollection.
And just, you know, number eight, I'm going to jump to number eight too. Number eight, we agreed with, and that is really the one that, that kind of gets into the, the science and the data. And, and we're not adopting that because that has to do with going against, that, that had to do with getting into the nitty gritty of like, we are not involved in science. We are not involved, like, that is at the state level and that's not our business. So that, that's why it makes sense to kind of go with this, the flow on these two for me. Eight does address it. Did, we, we were voting to support ISB's recommend, and a recommendation to not adopt on eight. We, we agreed with them. But seven, we were going, we originally just were going in the opposite direction and I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I'm trying to get this clear in my head. So I, I think what they're saying is, it's almost like a, well, it's a policy statement, right? To, of the ISB, which is influential, that goes to the state to say, hey, we like more local control than the state. So lo, lower levels of government units having some control. Am I understanding this right? Okay. Yeah, I, I don't. And, and the ISB is saying.
We're saying more, they're saying they want basically what we already have now. Seven.
They're recommending.
A regional approach.
Yeah, okay, okay. And then you're saying you're, you're convinced?
Doning it.
Okay.
Basically saying, I agree with what we have now. Not more.
Should we straw poll it? Let's do it. Yes.
Good, okay, good.
Good.
Okay, Ellen, are there other changes that you wanted to recommend?
The only other, the last thing was the reaffirmation of existing positions. We had, we were going to abstain from this and I thought we should vote on this, that we should actually take a stance. I wrote, I gave you guys the information. I hope you guys had a chance to go through it. And why we should take a stance. I think we should support all three of these. Very compelling. This, you guys all said you didn't know anything about charter schools. This gives you the information. If you've had a chance to go through it, I, maybe we could just take a poll and see if everyone agrees that we should support this.
So I, it was hard to get this so late.
I know, I'm so sorry.
I, I have to say, I, I don't still feel educated. I see, I have a lot of information about one side of it, which is very compelling. But I did not then have time to, on my own, understand the competing arguments of what, why. So I'm not going to stand in the way by any means, but I don't feel like I, this is an area where I have great expertise. I find what you shared very compelling and I'm inclined to support it. But I can't say that I understand the other side of the issue.
I can tell you, as someone who's lived in the city and seen this happen firsthand, I didn't see this particular one happen firsthand. I know Tony has. But I can say in the city, I've seen this happen firsthand. And the other side, it, it's, it, these situations are really not pretty.
Right, and I, I am inclined to agree.
Mandates completely. Yeah, it, it's, it's situations where the state, you know, just says, we're putting a charter school here. And basically the money comes out of the district and you don't have control over it. And they have a board and they make their own decisions and they do what they want. And basically what happens is they say that they are going to have an equal amount of students of, you know, students with special needs and students with, that are low income and this and that. And they never do. And they're, they are all wealthy students and very homogenized and very, you know, privileged and whatever. And they never, ever come up with the numbers of students from outside of that little enclave that are the special needs and the low, and, and yet they're getting, and that, they're siphoning money off of the, the district. And that's why ISB in their, in their further amendments, when you go on into their documents, it's why they amended their policies later on in their, when, in their packet. It's why they're amending, the ISB in general is amending their, their documents about charter schools and about the other kind of charter schools that, that, I forget the name of it. What's the name, Tony, what's the name of the other kind of charter school? What's, what's the name of the other kind of charter school that?
Public versus private.
No, there is, there's two kinds of charter schools that the state funds, the, that they shut down. There is a, well, anyway. So there, the, the ISB basically is, is all over this because it's been a problem since day one. And they realized it.
So the ISB is recommending what?
To support all three of the, to, to support all three of these reaffirmations of existing positions.
I have a really dumb question here. Do charter schools send people to the ISB? Are they separate? I mean, they, they have boards, right? And they have public kids.
I don't think that they are members of the Illinois Association of School Boards.
Yeah.
I think they're a private organization, so they wouldn't be eligible to be members.
So I'm just going to say that I, I kind of feel the same way with Amy. It sounded like there were like backstories that we really don't know about. I kind of like our first position, which was to bow out of this one.
Yeah, I know this process started late, but, and, you know, to not take a position is one thing. But to take a position means we did our homework and, and I don't feel that we, we started early enough that the second round was early enough to, to, to take a position.
Apologize for getting it.
The whole process started late.
It begs like most takes to abstain and so we're probably best staying there. Bets all kinds of questions, but I just don't know.
For me, it feels too important to weigh in without revealing consent.
Does anybody want to advocate for the other position or do we feel like we have consensus on this? Does anybody want to advocate for the other position, or do we feel like we have consensus on this?
Well. I support strongly. I support strongly, supporting all three positions, but that's me.
I'm, I'm with Lisa and Amy.
Not the only other one.
Thank you very much. Lisa, I think we're back to you.
Yep. Ellen, thank you for all your work on this. I know it took a tremendous amount of time and effort. And I know you'll do a great job representing District 39. Hopefully, it won't be too long. Any other old business?
Yeah, I don't know if it, I guess it falls under old business, the, the concept that I brought up last month. They have a proposal, so let me back up. Hopefully, when we look at the budget numbers next month, we'll be able to fund the things that we've been working toward for actually years. But there's enough variables that we may not be able to, and we may have to prioritize. And if we prioritize, there may be. There may be one of the scenarios of not being able to fully fund the kindergarten enrichment enhancements next year. In order to be able to make that decision, we have to have all the facts. And one of the things is to understand what it would look like for the parents of Ramona and Mackenzie. That had to set out this year because of the plan we had, which made sense. But we made a commitment that they wouldn't have to sit out forever. So I, I think part of our financial discussion has to be an understanding of what it would look like. For those schools if we decided that we couldn't afford to fund both, both of the improvements. And, and maybe that's a lottery, but what did that mean? Maybe it's like the third kindergarten room at Ramona gets converted back to a kindergarten room so they can have an enrichment class. I don't know what the solutions are, but to say, we will take care of it, isn't a good answer for, for parents. If we have to vote financially on something, and then we find out that, that the. The best we can do to support those, those schools is less than we had hoped for.
So when would you like those proposals brought to you as a board?
Well, given that we've sped up the, the capital budget allocation things, I think would have to be, it'd have to be next month.
Right, so at the committee of the whole meeting in December, you want us to bring forward what it will look like if we don't have additions onto both schools?
Yeah, for one or both. Or whichever way, well, I guess without, those would be the options that we might have to consider from a capital allocation standpoint.
Yeah, I, I, if I could add, Frank, I think I, I get the point you're making. And, I mean, in my mind, it's, it's what would, is there a fair outcome? If both schools are not funded for the expansion?
And I just want to say, given all that's going on with COVID, I mean, I, I listened to. Just the work that it's gonna take to figure out next semester's enrollment, the testing, there's a lot on their plate, so. And I also, Frank, understand the need for information to make a decision, so I'd like to just maybe click. Think about some kind of middle ground, which is a conceptual idea of models without an in-depth. Kind of, here's the logistics and here's what we would do.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I, I completely agree with that. I, I mean, we've. We have to have enough of, of an idea that it's got a chance of, of being the right thing, so we make a decision based on facts. The, the details, hopefully, will decide that there's enough money and that we can fund everything that we've been working toward, and it doesn't happen. But we can't go into it with that, if we do, then we don't have to talk about capital budgets, we can just say, go for it, and, you know. And not have a discussion, and I don't think any of us are going to or want to do that. But this is an important part, because if, if it turns out that. The only option is that we can't fund one of those and feel comfortable with where our money is. And that means a school, you know, gets. Left behind, that, that's not what I feel that I'm, you know, trying to represent the whole community would feel comfortable with.
Okay, we will draft a proposal then to bring to the board at the committee of the whole meeting in December.
High level.
Yeah.
Is there any other old business? Moving on to new business, any new business this week, I mean, this month?
I had one, every time I hear the word testing, I immediately go to what we always used to talk about with testing. So I, I know we're doing tons of work, and I'm not putting this at the top of the queue, but. Part of what's happening with COVID is what does it mean to our, our students and how are they learning? And I know, I, I think the last I heard that there was some standardized testing that did take place this fall. Just some kind of an update, as it can be fit in either next month or in January.
I think that's scheduled for the board meeting on Monday.
Oh, perfect, okay, alright.
Great, any other new business? Okay, if I miss you because I can't see you, shout out. So now I'm moving on to public comment. I can't see, are there any members in the audience?
There are not.
There are not.
Thank you. Well, then the district has approved, approved, requested that public comment be emailed to publiccomment@wilmet39.org. Tony, have we received any public comments via email?
Yes, we've received 10 public comments, some of them are quick, while others would probably hit the three-minute timer. So, before I begin, are we just?
Board members, are we gonna proceed, or do we need a five-minute break?
Proceed, go on.
Are you going to do a timer, Frank?
I would recommend doing a timers. Let's see how I do, and then if you see me. Asking for help, or yeah, passing out through the mask, then we'll do that. Okay, Carla Benigni. Dr. Kremiscoli and School Board, this is a difficult time, no doubt. As a parent of two Harper Elementary students and one HMS student. I want to first thank you for the time and efforts you have put into ensuring our schools are safe for students, teachers, and staff. You have been thoughtful and flexible as you have worked to accommodate our students in the classroom. All three of my kids are in person. I realize there may be a time where we need to shift to remote learning due to the community and/or school conditions. But I ask that it be done with careful consideration. The students, my, my kids do remarkably better in person than remotely. They are engaged in their learning and have made significant more academic, academic progress in person than remote. I appreciate the improved efforts the teachers made to engage students remotely this fall, but it is not the same as in person. In addition, I saw the kids' ability to focus and engage remotely wane as the remote learning dragged on. And specifically for my kindergartner, it was difficult. I give Ms. Cozabel. An enormous amount of credit for the energy and creative activities that she brought to remote learning. However, kids that age need constant feedback to stay engaged and learn. That is honestly very difficult to provide in a remote learning environment where they are muted and have to wait to raise their hand. I'm not saying they need to be called on constantly, but they need the verbal cues, i.e. thank you for wanting to share what Suzie is going to share this time. And nonverbal cues, pointing to classmates to talk or putting your fingers to your lips. To understand that they are being seen, but also need to respect in, in it's someone else's turn. Without it, my daughter would quickly become frustrated and defiant about doing her activities. I also really struggle with the amount of screen time we are creating for kids that young. In the classroom, there's far less screen time with their iPads. I am writing to urge you to continue to find creative ways to keep the kids, especially the younger children, in school learning. Thank you. Rusha Patel. The numbers for positively, for positivity look great this week locally despite Cook County. The continued downward trend is so encouraging. Schools staying open are, are at the discretion of the local towns, per the governor. Children are so happy in school, and the students and the schools are doing a fantastic job of in-person risk mitigation. The New York Times has many articles last week stating schools are safe. And the bars and restaurants are the no-go for COVID. Thanks to everyone for doing such an amazing job with this entire process, and thank you for having in-person school from every one of us. We are so happy with all the processes. Rusha Patel. Schools remain open as new restrictions go into place with mask mandates and curfews. As should be, as schools are not sources of outbreaks like the wonderful job of in-person in D39. The teachers and staff are doing a mind-blowing job that should be applauded. Thank you for a safe and well-run in-person classes. Thank you, thank you. My kids are so happy and learning so much from the teachers. And she references an article titled Massachusetts Governor Announces New Coronavirus Restrictions As State Infections Surge, as well as a link to that article. Rusha Patel. Excellent article. I applauding D39. As you all have figured out, for this in-person instruction, per the article, closing schools is not. The answer, and this expert at Brown University explains it all. Keep in-person open. Once again, science prevails and schools are not the sources of COVID-19 spread. As is also the case for schools that have been open through higher percentages of COVID-19 in districts with good mitigation. At schools and masking and social distancing. Good read, and please keep schools open, science. Thank you for your time. And she references a link to an Edweek article. Rusha Patel. This hasn't been advertised because of the current political climate, but you can order at-home COVID test, testing kids free. Gets free, and it's covered by insurance. If we could get the community as a whole to test weekly at home, that would help us out even more in terms of keeping open in-person school. The kits are for 18 and older, but our household is going to use this and test weekly. A lot of our affluent community has insurance, and all the insurances are listed in there as well. It is at zero cost to the, to the in-person ordering. I'm a healthcare worker and a community member. I hope we can keep our schools open based on science and data. That COVID spread is not occurring at schools, and masks, hand washing, and social distancing is key. She references a link to pixel.labcorp.com. Rachel Hilgeman. Hello, Dr. Kremiscoli and School Board. I listened in on the metrics meeting this morning. It is clear that our situation is becoming increasingly complicated as the regional and national rates rise. I am concerned about the number of subjective viewpoints and anecdotal experiences that were shared today. Rather than focusing on, focusing more on the objective issues, namely the metrics. The teachers slash WEA participants seem to ignore what, what, what has stayed constant and true throughout. That we have no, had no in-school outbreaks. Additionally, they seem to not hear when the epidemiologist states that our schools are the safest place for teachers and students. One can legitimately argue that shifting to remote learning automatically allows for loser control of the pandemic in our school community. Similarly, to how going on vacation does. The contributions from our board members, physicians, and school principals remain positive, objective, and fair. Positives and negatives weighed and discussed when considering how to proceed. Thank you for this. Another piece of feedback, the survey sent out to parents serves the purpose to allow our, us to voice our opinions. Metrics committee members should not speak on parents' behalf, as was done today by, I believe, Heather Cartwright. She states that many parents of in-person learners are now uncomfortable with the situation. If this is true, allow parents to communicate this themselves. Regarding discussions around shifting, shutting down between Thanksgiving and winter break, why all the pressure to make this decision now? Shouldn't these decisions be made with up-to-date metrics to support them? If families and staff choose to travel, isn't it reasonable to have disclosed previously? So that the appropriate measures, quarantine, can be put in place afterwards to maintain status quo in the school environment? The entire district should not shut down for this. Since when did school become optional? Why are we not discussing how this could affect our students? Has anyone considered adding the student's social emotional well-being as a metric? I understand the possibility that we may shift back and forth between in-person and remote hybrid learning in the coming months. However, pivoting to district-wide remote learning in place of in-person learning when metrics do not support the shift is not okay. Pivoting to remote when there have been no outbreaks in the school simply does not make sense. To implement the shift solely to allow for staff and family travel undermines the integrity of a very effective system that we have in place. It gives the perception that we can use the remote option for anything and everything. It overlooks the importance of the quality of our children's educational experience. Lastly, I'd like to address the shark analogy that was used at the meeting by the WEA representative. This is the perfect example of fear-mongering strategy. The responses that it got at the meeting from the remote camp members exemplifies just how powerful and damaging the strategy can be. In my opinion, comments like these are not welcome or appropriate in a metrics committee meeting. Timer, okay, sorry. I can't hear the timer, so feel free to.
I'm working it.
Yeah, just let me know. Rusha Patel. Hello, all, I'm writing once again to.
Second comment, then.
Should be one minute.
It should be one minute.
Okay, yes, so. Just let me know when the one minute is up. Hello, all, I'm writing once again about in-person instruction, and it's going so well. D39 is open, is doing all the right things. Mitigation efforts are in place, and kids and parents are so very happy with everything. Schools should remain open, and with current metrics, should remain open through and after the holidays. Closing schools will pivot, and pivoting to remote is not an option. Schools are the safest place for researchers, doctors, and educators. Closing schools will not change positivity numbers in communities. This is a well-documented fact by scientists and researchers. My kids are thriving and socially, mentally, and emotionally very stable with their teachers, peers, and most importantly, themselves. The main goal is to keep schools open, and I fully support this decision as a healthcare worker. Next one is from Lori Fisher. To the Board of Education, Dr. Kremiscoli, the Metrics Advisory Board, Kate Dominique, and Jeff Dees. Our family chose the hybrid learning model, and in doing so, accepted a certain level of risk for the benefit of in-person learning. We are grateful to the teachers and administration for the extraordinary effort they have made to keep our, to, for our kids to have in-person learning while trying to maintain safety. Right now, however, my parental warning bells are going off because of the alarming surge in COVID positivity in Wilmet. Which is increasing daily at an exponential rate, over 8% as I write this. We are unwilling to take this on, this current unreasonable COVID transmission risk in order to attend in-person school. This has escalated to a level way beyond what we initially signed up for. And would never have agreed to attend in-person school under these current circumstances. To be clear, we do not want to join the all-remote cohort. We want to continue attending hybrid in-person classes. But we were confident that the D39 COVID Metrics Advisory Board, which is established for the sole purpose. Of closely monitoring these metrics and enforcing safety mitigations in school. Would swiftly pivot to remote when and if the numbers increase to protect our students, teachers, and community. I assume that the advisory board would establish safe and protective thresholds linked to our community and state transmission levels that we would adhere to. Currently, the hybrid model did not mean in-person at any cost. We assumed it meant in-person school when the numbers during the pandemic allowed. For the past week, my son, who attends WJHS and in the hybrid cohorts, did not attend his in-person school days because we do not feel safe. Or comfortable with in-person learning during sustained COVID surges in our community. In Kate Dominique's weekly highlights, she wrote that this was frowned upon. And that the D39 hybrid programming was not set up for in-person students to stay home and still participate in school that day. I do not want to be put in the scary and exposed position. It is reckless and unfair. Wilmet is in the warning zone for every data point. Cook County is worse. If D39 is not going to pivot to remote learning when every data point demonstrates that we are the, in the highest risk for, in school transmission. Then the families who chose hybrid but are rightfully concerned for the health and safety will be forced to make the stressful decision. will be forced to make the stressful decision to be forced to keep their kids at home. If a school bus was driving through yellow lights and then red lights, would you let your child ride that bus? How can we, how can our families trust the judgment of the D-39 COVID Metrics Advisory Board? This past Friday, when they met, discussed the following. One, the Willmet positivity rate has been climbing at an alarming rate over the past two weeks. They talked about pivoting to remote learning because of the heightened risk of in-school transmission, which correlates with community spread. They mentioned that teachers and staff were scared and worried for their own safety and the safety of their families. Okay, last one. Abby and Steve Karasik. To the District 39 Board, actually, there's one more beyond this. Uh, our names are Abby and Steve Karasik. We live in Willmet with our son, a seventh grader at WJHS, and our daughter, a sophomore at Nutri. We are writing to the board to express our strong interest in having District 39 implement a COVID surveillance testing program. As the board is likely aware, Nutri has announced at the beginning, at beginning in, that, beginning in mid-November, students and staff will take part in a COVID testing program. Specifically, Nutri will test students and staff once a week using a saliva-based test. Students and staff will produce a small saliva sample at home and then drop off the sample at Nutri. A sample that screens positive for COVID will be presumed presumptive positive and the associated person will be referred to a standard PCR test administered by a healthcare professional. Presumptive positive people will not be, will not attend any in-person activity at Nutri until it's determined that the person is no longer a risk. We understand that the mitigation strategies currently in place in District 39 are a great start. We recognize that the early identification and isolation of cases is, of course, a required process. However, the current process is not designed to identify asymptomatic cases. Screening programs such as the program outlined by Nutri will additionally identify asymptomatic cases. The combination of the existing strategies plus a testing program would enhance the safety in our schools. This is not our opinion. It is supported by the following facts. One, the New England Journal of Medicine article, "The Missing Piece." Two, IDPH, Dr. Legozzi, while speaking at a Northwestern Feinberg School of Medicine, Department of Medicine, Grand Rounds on October 13th, supports, voiced support for the use of rapid tests for screening in public schools. Three, existing and announced screening programs at Nutri, the University of Illinois, and Northwestern University for successful implementation in other Illinois school districts such as District 102. We understand that testing may have been discussed within the District 39 Metrics reopening advising team. We understand that consideration of a testing program is a topic for the District 39 Board. To be clear, the board members should understand how a testing program works and the decision to either move forward or not move forward must be decided at a board level. At a minimum, we strongly suggest that the board engage Dr. Edward Campbell, PhD of Loyola University, to do a short presentation to the board on testing programs. Dr. Campbell is an associate professor in the Department of Microbiology and Immunology at Loyola University. He's also a parent and school board member in LaGrange Brookfield Elementary School District 102. He helped design and implement the screening program in District 102 and consulted to Nutri in the design of their screening program. Our understanding, okay, one last one. Christina Robinson. Hello, I'd first like to thank you for all the huge amount of effort and planning that has gone into this school year. I'm a parent of an in-person kindergartner at Central, including Keep 39, and cannot imagine how challenging this has been. I wanted to send a few points of feedback in our time so far during this school year. The Welcome Weeks ease into in-person learning went well. Charlie's teacher did a wonderful job and the kids built community, even with the in-and-out school situation. I very much appreciated the flexibility in moving up the in-person full model a week for, uh, a model a week for kindergartners. The willingness to pivot was a great sign of future decision-making. The full in-person experience at Central so far has been fantastic. Charlie is thriving, making friends, learning, engaged, sleeping well, et cetera. He chooses doing extra schoolwork on the weekends instead of playing sometimes. While I think he would be a positive, he would be positive, even in a remote environment. Thriving would be harder for him, given his temperament. Central's doing a great job following the protocols as intended. While the community spread is scary right now, I'm happy to see the in-school metrics haven't really changed over the weeks. This shows the protocols are working. I recognize that at some point, if community spread is bad enough, you run out of teacher staff to run the school appropriately due to sickness or quarantine. In that case, moving to remotes may have to happen. However, I appreciate that we have been able to stay in so far and we haven't completely reacted to the community spread, given the data we have on the schools themselves. I have heard that getting testing within the district is a goal. I would personally feel more confident in the ability to continue in-person, given the community spread, if there's more testing available for both random testing and symptom slash close contact testing. I hope this is able to happen. While I know the decisions going forward, we'll continue to have, to weigh the numbers, testing, staffing, as well as teacher union needs. I appreciate that, what we've done so far, and applaud you for your efforts. That is all.
Great, thank you. Having no further business, we need a motion to adjourn committee of the whole meeting.
Move to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
May I have a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Johnson's ready. Frank Tenzica.
Yes.
Amy Paling.
Yes.
Mark Steen.
Yes.
Aaron Stone.
Yes.
Lisa Schneiderpibbs.
Yes. Motion carries. It is 12:47 PM. Thank you, everyone. I know this was a long one.
Thank you, Lisa.
Lisa.
Thank you, Aaron.
Bye, Aaron.